Wow, yeah. I don't want to do anything like that.
I'm just going to tell you right now, I didn't read it.
I did, because I thought, no, I'm geeky about this.
This trip was from the freeation point of view.
Saw it.
So it was amazing.
That's awesome. That sounds really cool.
Yeah. The executive summary was...
Yeah, I lived in Prescott for four years and went to school in the Air Force Reserve there, so we went up there so much, it was incredible.
Oh, yeah, I'd love to go up there a lot.
But that sounds really cool, the creation.
Uh huh. I mean, it really was that it was formed from global flux rather than from millions of years. And the guide says, he says, "I've talked to these people who just really get on me. Don't tell those people those lies," and he goes...
Okay, good evening, everybody. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please take your seats. We're going to get started here. Welcome, everybody, to the City Council Study Session. Our first agenda item of the evening is Integral Engineering Report on Allen Filtration Plant. This is an informational item. Representatives from Integral Consulting are present with their findings of their human health risk assessment and evaluation of residuals management study for the Allen Water Treatment Plant. Welcome, everybody. Thanks for being here tonight. Maybe we should do a round of introductions and we'll return the favor.
I'll start us off. My name's Alice Convitz. I'm a managing scientist at Integral Consulting and here with my teaming partners on the project.
Mike Lutz with Duberry Engineers.
Thank you.
Craig Little.
You might have to share that mic. I apologize. We are live streaming and it doesn't pick up the audio so great. You really got to kind of get into it.
Sorry. Mike Lutz with Duberry Engineers.
Thank you, sir.
I'm Craig Little with Two Lines Radiation Risk Consultants.
Welcome. Should we return the favor here, Councilmember Martinez?
Hi, I'm Amy Martinez, Councilmember at large.
Laura Barrentine, District Three.
Rita Russell, at large.
Eric Keck, City Manager.
Allison McKinney Brown, City Attorney.
Joe Jefferson, Mayor in District One.
Rick Gillett, Mayor of Pro Tem, District Four.
Linda Olson, District Two.
Steve Yates, at large.
Of course, you probably know this gentleman already, so please.
All right, well, again, thank you all for having us here. I want to describe our roles a little bit, and then we have about a 15-minute presentation or so and open at any time through the presentation or after if we want to answer your questions. I've served as project manager from Integral and primary liaison with Mr. Brennan and his team. My colleague, Dr. John Samuelian, was the lead human health risk assessor on the project.
Thank you. I know we have been, council has been provided some series of questions from some folks tonight. Perhaps the city attorney might comment on appropriateness of questions this evening.
Members of the council, the documentation you received was pretty in-depth, and it takes a while to read, and it's also a lot of engineering types of things. I'm going to ask if you'll hold your questions for this evening and give everybody some time to review your paperwork, and then we'll get back with this group and ask questions in, I don't know, 30 days or so, as we can arrange that. But for tonight, if you'll just listen to the presentation, and that should give you some information that should allow you to better read the documentation that's been provided.
I agree with you. A report, 377 pages, and then the eight reams of documentation that I was provided of material that backs this up is a lot when we just got back from CML on Friday night sometime, and I didn't even realize until Saturday morning. But I want to make sure that we're going to, just to clarify, we're going to have another meeting with this group of people so that we can ask questions in about 30 days.
I'm going to reach out to them.
Okay, so I just want to make it clear that none of the lack of questions or bringing up any issues is in no way, at least on my part, any acceptance of this report, but just that we're getting the presentation and that we'll have an opportunity to move forward with questions later. All right, thanks.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Okay, thank you. Okay, where was I? So just to again explain our roles, Integral performed the human health risk assessment, and Dr. Little, who's a health physicist, provided technical expertise and review as we worked. And then Mike Lutz and his team looked at the engineering piece, so you'll hear from all three of us today. I want to start off with a little bit of background to make sure we're all starting on the same page here. So radiation is at its simplest just energy, and radioactive materials are all around us, particularly in geology, in the rocks and soil and dirt all around us. We call that naturally occurring radioactive material. And the source water coming into the Charles Allen Filtration Plant includes some of this naturally occurring radioactive material, or NORM as we call it. And sampling indicates that Big Dry Creek coming in here into the South Platte is a large source of this NORM. Now, when the source waters enter the filtration plant, the treatment process does exactly what it's supposed to do. It pulls out all the constituents from the drinking water so that clean drinking water is going out to the homes. What that leaves behind at the plant are what we call residuals. So you can imagine a very clay, wet-type soil that concentrates all of these constituents that came out of the drinking water. That also concentrates the NORM materials, and we end up with what we call technologically enhanced naturally occurring radioactive material, or T-NORM. And that's what we'll be talking about here today. So our key study questions, and these were laid out in the request for proposals that the City of Angle would put out last fall. So the key study questions for the human health risk assessment: Does exposure to this T-NORM cause potential risks to the site workers or to nearby residents or public users of the trail systems? And again, we were tasked with looking at both historical treatment and residual handling methods and current methods. Then on the engineering side, what measures could eliminate or reduce potential risks and roughly what would those cost? So we'll touch on all of that today. Starting with the assessment of risk. So a human health risk assessment, you want to identify your receptors. And again, in this case, we wanted to look at the onsite workers. We wanted to look at nearby residents and nearby public, so users of the dog park, users of the nearby trail system with a 2,500-foot diameter. We used the RESRIDE model, the residual radioactivity, that's what that stands for. That was developed by Argon National Labs. It's a widely accepted model to calculate the radiation dose and cancer risk to these receptors. We looked at the residuals, the onsite data from the residuals, looking at the radionuclide concentrations, in particular, looking at radium isotopes and uranium isotopes. And I want to really emphasize that that is onsite measured data. So prior to disposal of the residuals each year at the Clean Harbors or other facilities, Mr. Brennan and his staff actually sampled the residuals themselves, and so we're able to use that empirical measured data in the model. For the risk assessment, we also use other site-specific information, measurable information like the pile size, in our exposure assumptions. And in some cases where there weren't measurements, we used EPA default values, and I gave an example there of the height that dust releases off of a pile. And we looked at three timeframes, and I want to make sure everybody understands why we did that. I touched on it earlier a little bit. Again, we wanted to look at any historical operations and current operations, and if there was a difference to the risk there or the potential for risk. So we looked at the full time period that we had data, 2002 to 2016. There's also a change in the alum dosing. Alum is what you use to coagulate the constituents in the drinking water and precipitate it out, and that change occurred in 2008. So our historical treatment process and residuals handling, that's the 2002 to 2009 period. And then from 2010 on to 2016, that's what we're calling current processes. 2010 being the first year that could have had fully, the residuals could have had fully that new treatment process. So plant features, might be a little hard to see in this room, but here's the indoor part of the plant where most of the treatment actually occurs, and again, the clean water then is routed out to the customers. The residuals then go into the, oh, thank you, into the process reservoir where they're stored underwater, and that happens all year long. When weather permits, so about eight months of the year, this dredge is used to pull the sediments, the settled residuals, out of that reservoir where they're, oh dear, I'll give you a sneak preview, where they are then pressed, the filter press inside this building here to remove water, or, I'm sorry, that building there, put in this eastern drying area, which is short-term drying of very wet materials, and then use a loader used to move them over here to the longer-term storage in the west area where they're covered with tarp. And here, again, the materials are held until sent off to the Clean Harbors facility. So we already touched on the receptors, but in particular, we're looking at the onsite workers, so equipment operators represented here. So these are people who would actually be handling the materials. We also looked at off-site receptors, so residents, both adults and children, dog park and trail users, again, both adults and children. The pathways of exposure vary depending on the receptor. So we have an inhalation pathway that applies to the onsite worker, and also there was a garden on the site for about four years. So there are a couple ways. There's ingestion of vegetables that have been grown in soils that may have received some dust. There's also incidental ingestion of dust itself, you manage sort of a incidental hand-to-mouth. For off-site, again, we have the inhalation pathways for both residents and recreational users, and also ingestion of produce for the residential. And one thing I want to emphasize here, we took a very conservative approach to the risk assessment, and by conservative, what I mean is you could think of this as almost a worst-case scenario. So we assumed that our facility workers are not using any personal protective equipment. We assumed that they're not using dust masks or gloves or something like that. And again, we wanted to be conservative in our approach so that we were understanding the full extent of risk possible. And quickly go over the results, and then Dr. Little will give you some context here. The calculations show for all the different ways of looking at the time periods that all risk for all of these receptors from the different pathways is within acceptable levels. So if we look at our off-site, at our residents and trail users, we're well below a threshold set by the Environmental Protection Agency for acceptable risk, so we're well below that. Also, if we look at ingestion by plant workers of what was in the garden, again, well, well below that acceptable level. And for the facility workers, and again, with this very conservative approach, we are within the acceptable, we're very much on the low end of that acceptable risk range. So that means the calculated risk is acceptable. And I'll let Dr. Little go into more detail.
Thank you. These, we're getting specific a little bit now on the calculated values that came out of the risk assessment. If we look at inhalation and ingestion from the facility, that is inhalation of dust that's moved off the facility or moved on the facility, available for an equipment operator or worker to inhale, and possibility of ingesting soil or ingesting vegetables that are grown in the garden or whatever, we come up with these numbers. The equipment, and these are the maximum numbers calculated for any scenario. The equipment operator had a risk of 1.9 times 10 to the sixth. Now, what does that mean? The acceptable risk ratio is 10 to the minus six, one in a million, to 10 to the minus four, one in 10,000. So this is slightly above the lower limit of the acceptable risk. It means, and the scenario has this operator working here for 25 years. So the scenario, the operator works here for 25 years, and that increases his chance of getting cancer by 1.9 in a million, okay? For a resident, the numbers are frankly miniscule. I think the scenario, obviously, this isn't a resident who's there for, I don't think it's 25 years, I don't remember the exact number, but even if it is, regardless, the risk ratio for a resident living nearby, possibly inhaling dust that blows off the facility and/or ingesting soil for one way or another, is 3.2 times 10 to the minus 11. That is 100,000 times lower than the very low end of the acceptable risk range. And for a trail user or a dog park user, we get 1.3 times 10 to the minus 11. So again, 100,000 times lower than what EPA would consider something you might take a look at. Shifting gears a little bit, exposure to external gamma from the facility. External gamma is like gamma photons or X-rays that come from the radioactive material, like the radium particularly, radium and its decay products. The equipment operator, we estimate, gets about 1 times 10 to the minus 2 milligram per year. Don't worry about what a milligram is. It's a measure of the exposure to radioactive materials, to the external gamma. A nearby resident gets 5.9 times 10 to the minus 3, and a trail user 2.3 times 10 to the minus 3. Now, what does this mean? Okay, we go back to the EPA risk assessment, acceptable risk range, which is 1 in a million to 1 in 10,000. In context, the risk of being struck by lightning in this country is 3 times 10 to the minus 7 per year. So every year, you run the risk of getting struck by lightning that is 3 times 10 to the minus 7. That's below the acceptable risk range here. In Colorado, you get, your chances of getting cancer are about 2 times 10 to the minus 3 per year. About two people out of every 1,000 get cancer in Colorado, and by the way, that is a low number relative to most of the states. The four corner states, which are historically uranium-producing states, have lower values, lower rates of cancer for most cancers and certainly all radiogenic cancers than the national average. What that says is that radiation is not a very strong carcinogen, and it can be overridden by things like lifestyle, less obesity, less smoking, more exercise, et cetera. Shift gears again to background gamma exposure. The number I showed before for gamma, the equipment operator gets 1 one-hundredth of a milligram per year. You, living here, get over 300 milligram per year just from background alone. This is the national average. The Colorado average is more like 500, depending on which town you live in. Those doses come from, the higher altitude you live, for example, if you live in Leadville, you get about 150 more milligram than you do down here because there's less atmosphere above you to shield you from cosmic rays that come from space, and there's still a lot of uranium in the soil. Fort Collins, for example, has a lot of uranium in the soil, and so people get a lot of gamma exposure there. So just in short, the calculated values from this risk assessment are very, very low. The equipment...
I apologize, but that last sentence on the last page wasn't, oh, you still have it. Could you just leave it on this one so that I could write that down? Because on the one you handed out, that last bullet point wasn't on there. I'd like to write it on my page.
Oh, it wasn't? Oh, yeah, that's a previous version. Sure.
Just give me a minute. Thank you.
No problem. It's right here. It's right here.
I see, I don't have it on your copy.
It's still not on my copy, and I just asked if I could write it down, so he's going to wait.
Yeah, it is not on mine either.
Thank you.
Please feel free to continue, though. You were talking about the equipment operator.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Sure. This is the previous slide. The numbers are extremely low for all of the risks. For the equipment operator, this is the highest value we found for a worker, and that is still well, well within the acceptable range. If this was 1.9 times 10 to the four, then EPA would want some consideration of the project, if you will, to see if something could be changed. But it's important to remember one thing that Alice mentioned, these are conservative numbers. We made assumptions to maximize what these numbers would be so as to give the worst possible, if you will, look at things. So now we know the risks are quite low, and Mike is going to spend a little time here talking about the management of the residuals that might lower those even more.
Thank you. Where's the, what did you put that?
That's the point.
Okay, all right. There are basically three ways that we can manage T-NORM residuals. One, the first way is to get it out of the raw water to begin with, if it's possible. Second way is to remove it in the treatment plant itself somehow, and the third way is keep things the way they are and improve management of the residuals themselves. The first thing we looked at was, is there a way to get the radionuclides out of the raw water to begin with so that it never gets in the plant in the first place? There is actually a way to do that. Historical data that the plant has collected or the city has collected for many years indicates that most of the uranium and radium comes into the South Platte River via Big Dry Creek, which goes into the river about 1,000 feet upstream of the intake for the water system. So if that, Big Dry Creek could be diverted downstream below the intake, that would move all that material downstream, and it would never enter the plant. That would require a small dam and an intake structure and emergency spillway on Big Dry Creek and a pipeline 1,000 feet long or so over to just below the intake structure. We estimated a 24-inch diameter pipeline would be adequate for the peak flows in the creek, and that that would cost about $1.6 million. Tom tells me that, I just found out today, that this solution is actually in the process of being implemented already. We looked at best available technology for removing radionuclides from the drinking water. Most of these technologies, and these are just some of them, there are more, but most of them will only remove one or the other radionuclide, not all of them. So we focused on these because they had the capability to remove both radium and uranium, and in some cases, alpha and beta radiation as well. I'll start at the bottom of this table. Coagulation filtration, that is the process currently used for pretreatment at the Allen Filtration Plant, and that is what causes accumulation of uranium in the residuals. So since that's how you're getting it in the first place, that technology is not going to help us here. Going up to the second one from the bottom, lime softening, is very similar to coagulation filtration, except it's using lime instead of the other chemical that you're currently using, and it would have, it would produce residuals that are quite similar to coagulation filtration, and would actually probably generate more volume of residuals, more T-NORM, which would actually make the problem worse than it is instead of better. Reverse osmosis at the top will remove all of these materials from water. It can't really be used on the residuals themselves because there are too many solids in it. But even if you could use it, reverse osmosis has a water loss of, in the neighborhood, 20%, which would really make it impractical, even if you could use it. So that leaves ion exchange, and that's the technology that we focused on as being a potential treatment alternative. It has a downside that it produces a waste brine that also has to be disposed of. But we can remove radium and uranium and the beta particles using that technology. We looked at a couple of different ion exchange technologies. The first one is MYX. That stands for magnetic ion exchange for removal of uranium and radium from the raw water. The graphic there just shows you what this system would look like. It's actually a pretty big deal to do this. MYX removes a number of contaminants from water. It was designed originally to remove dissolved organic compounds, and they don't have any actual experience in removing uranium or radium. However, other ion exchange processes are well-known to remove uranium and radium, so we're quite sure that this would work in this application. It would produce about 300 to 600 gallons of T-NORM waste per million gallons of water treated. So you would end up with 5,000 or 6,000 gallons at plant capacity, 5,000 or 6,000 gallons per day of liquid waste containing the T-NORMs, and that would have to be disposed as a hazardous material similar to the existing residuals. We think it would be possible to take that liquid waste and then put it in a large drying bed and dry it by evaporation and solar exposure to a dry material that you would ultimately dispose, and that would help reduce the cost of that. So this, we've got an estimated cost for this system at 10 mgd capacity of $7.8 million. The next one is zeolite exchange type of ion exchange. This occurs in pressure vessels. So the photograph there are about 1 million gallon a day pressure filters that contain a zeolite media. The zeolite's a natural mineral product that will absorb uranium and radium. Each of those requires a different zeolite material, so these filters would have to have both of those materials in the filter, but it could be done. To treat raw water, we can't have suspended solids running through these filters. It would clog them up, so it would also require a pre-filter to remove suspended solids down to about 10 micrometers before it went through these. This process is managed by a local company called WRT. They're licensed to handle radioactive material and dispose of it in a number of states, including Colorado, and they would actually manage this whole process so that your plant staff would never actually deal with this material. They would fill the filters up with the zeolite material, monitor it, and then when the material's exhausted, they would come in, remove that material, put in new material, and take it to disposal. One of the things that's kind of attractive about this process is they actually recycle the uranium that they collect in these filters for fuel for nuclear reactors. This one has an estimated cost of $10.6 million for 5 mgd capacity. We looked at managing residuals, T-NORM residuals, on the site, and that would basically involve construction of containment buildings around the residual storage areas, so that one building for the east storage area and one building for the west area, total footprint of about 19,000 square feet. This would require ventilation of the exhaust air out of the building to prevent that dust from escaping, and workers working inside the building would be required to wear respiratory protective equipment. And the dried residuals would then be loaded into trucks for disposal off-site, but they'd be loaded inside the building and sealed up before they left the building. And this has an estimated cost of $10.8 million. And this has an estimated construction cost of $5.6 million. It would be possible to reduce t-norm exposure on the site by storing the residuals at the Littleton-Inglewood Biosolids Farm. So that's a facility that's jointly owned and operated by Inglewood and Littleton. The idea here would be to de-water the residuals as you're currently doing at the site, but instead of storing them at the water treatment plant, load them directly into a truck and truck them out to the Biosolids Farm. At that point, it could be unloaded, spread out into a pond enclosure essentially, and dried by solar evaporation. Doing that would reduce the volume of the material significantly. Then after it was dried, you would reload it and still take it out to the Clean Harbors has-waste landfill. But the advantage is you'd reduce the volume and weight significantly, which would reduce the disposal costs. So we think the cost to actually transport the wet, or the de-watered material that's not dried at the plant would probably cost a little bit more in transportation costs, but the reduction in landfill disposal would probably offset that. And it would probably be actually cheaper in the long run. The Biosolids Farm is located midway between the treatment plant and the landfill that you're already taking it to, so there wouldn't be a large increase in transportation costs because you're already going halfway there, or you're going past it on the way there anyway. We estimated $1.3 million construction cost to implement this.
All right. And just to bring it all together, that whole long report, we'll try to summarize here. Our recommendations, based on the very low risk that was calculated using onsite data and conservative assumptions, shows that you can continue the existing residual management and disposal practices. We also recommend continuing the monitoring of the concentrations in those residuals. So over time, you can continue to check in and recalculate the risk and see if that changes over time. Again, that marring has to be done anyhow prior to disposal at the Clean Harbors facilities. We also recommend ensuring and supporting facility workers to follow the personal protective equipment rules. That'll help reduce those possible pathways of exposure. And consider the management alternatives that Mike presented here and that some have already started, you know, moving in that direction. So there's already very, very low risk, but that risk could be reduced even more by considering these alternatives. Thank you all.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from council? I know we want to try to say a little bit out of the weeds on some of these questions. Mayor Protop?
I don't have any questions on the report. I just have a environmental question. Radon's a naturally occurring contaminant, or whatever you want to call it. And I know it's four picolaries per liter, four picocuries per liter in households that it has to be mitigated, or it could be health risk. How does that compare to the chart that you just gave, say on a normal house, here in Inglewood, versus that?
Okay. First of all, you're right. The EPA action level is four picocuries per liter. And what that says is, if you have a structure, a house or a workplace, that exceeds that, you should consider mitigation. Okay? There's not a requirement. It's a consideration you should make. And I would suggest that every homeowner should measure the radon in their house, and if it's above four, they ought to seriously consider investing $1,500 to $1,800 to get it mitigated. But radon is only an issue inside. So outside, where the workers are outside, there is no radon dose at all. Because the radon gas itself, while it's radioactive, it's still a gas, and you inhale it and you exhale it. But as it decays, it decays into atomic sized particles that are themselves particles, and may be inhaled and stick in the lung, and that's where the potential dose comes from. In outdoor radon, there are none of those particles, and, you know, they're there, but there aren't enough of them to cause any issues at all.
I think my question is, how does one compare to the other? Is the four picocuries per liter within the same ranges as you would say an outdoor worker?
No, the outdoor worker dose is much lower, much lower.
So it's more dangerous to live in a home than it is to work at the plant?
Absolutely. If you're outdoors, there is absolutely no radon risk at all.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question for city staff, and that is an update perhaps on the Big Dry Creek diversion. You know, where are we at on construction of that, and when might we be able to see the impacts that has on our hardness as well as perhaps the t-norms?
The diversion pipeline is going to be put in this August. The dam and diversion structure is scheduled for '18, and then it'll probably be two or three years after that because we're pulling out of that reservoir. So there is going to be some remaining in the reservoir, but we should realize full impact in two to three years.
Thank you.
So 2021.
Thank you. Any other final questions or comments? Councilmember Barrington?
Actually, I have a lot of questions. I didn't have a chance to go through the entire report, but at this point, I'm going to go ahead and honor what we agreed to and not ask them at this time, and wait till you guys come back again. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else with anything? I appreciate you folks being here this evening for this presentation. I'm going to move us on to agenda item number two.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
This is our PIO update. Communications manager Allison Carney is here to update council on upcoming events. Good evening, Manager Carney.
Good evening. We have a long list. I think I haven't been here for a while.
Right.
So tomorrow night, we have our fourth and final community budget goals workshop, and that's at Charles Hay Elementary at 6:30 PM. We've had really good turnout and a lot of positive feedback from these meetings, so hopefully you can make it to our last one.
What time is that one again?
6:30.
Thank you.
Thursday morning, the wastewater treatment plant has offered a tour of the farm. If you've RSVP'd for that, there will be transportation and lunch provided.
Wednesday or Thursday?
Thursday. And then that evening, oh, sorry, did I? Thursday, that evening at 6:30 PM is the Energy Efficient Inglewood Celebration kickoff at the Sounds of Summer Concert Series right down outside here at the amphitheater, and that's at 6:30, and we'll have vendor booths and giveaways that night. Saturday, this Saturday, July 1st, at 1:00 is Auto-RV America grand opening, and that's on Broadway. Tuesday, of course, is the
What time is that?
That's at 1:00.
Thank you.
Tuesday is the 4th of July, so activities will begin at 3:00 PM in both parks. The band starts at 7:00 PM, and then the fireworks are at 9:30.
Council will be given some parking passes for that event?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I need a couple.
Okay. We'll coordinate that.
You've got a whole driveway. You charge for parking there.
Let's see. Friday, that Friday, July 7th, at 7:00 AM is South Metro Denver Chambers Women in Business Breakfast with some local mayors presenting. I think the Centennial Mayor will be there. Thursday, July 18th, is the Guild downstairs is having their ribbon cutting. They've been open for a while, but they're having their grand opening, July 18th, and that's at 5:00 PM. And that's right, this one, this coworking space right down below us.
What time do you say that was?
5:00 PM. And that's on the 18th. In August, you've all been invited with Littleton Council for tours of the wastewater treatment plant and Meadow Gold and another regulated industry. I don't know what that means. So hopefully you have that on your calendars. You also are having a joint council meeting, August 17th, and that's at 7:30 AM. And all of this should be on your calendars, but just kind of nice to get a reminder. If you are interested in that Emerald Ash Borer tour, then Boulder again this year, they're having two, one on August 15th and one on August 17th, so we can RSVP for those if you wanted to go up there and see what's going on.
When is this joint tour with Littleton?
Those tours on the August 10th. I don't know, it's called the Tours of Two Regulated Industries.
Yeah, it's a pretreatment. It's a pretreatment division, and this actually, they actually go into the business and show you what they're looking for, specifically Meadow Gold, and I believe they're going to a
And TTM Technologies.
It's a powder coater. It's a metal powder coating business, so you can actually see what the business does and what pretreatment does.
And that's all day. I think that's at 8:00 AM.
Did you say you put in a calendar request already for us on this? Because I don't have one.
I'm not sure what Krista has done. I know she will put them in, but maybe she hasn't yet, for in August.
July 11th.
Okay.
I know we got an email from the chamber regarding the Guild.
But I'm just wondering if I could ask if we could get requests or it goes
Yeah.
No, Greg Reed.
And I can email you this list, but also she can put them in your Outlook.
You did do that. Would you let me know because I'm
Yeah. Maybe she hasn't because some of these are far out.
Anybody else have Outlook requests for those dates?
I haven't seen them yet.
Yeah, I haven't seen them.
Okay, so she probably hasn't put them in yet. She will.
Follow up on that. Thank you.
And that's it.
Anything else? Okay. Any questions or comments from council?
For me, those dates aren't far out.
Yeah. She can get them in there in advance.
Sure.
Right. Yes.
Yep. Manager Keck says he's on it, and he'll get us those calendar invites ASAP.
Got it.
Okay, let's move on to, thank you, Manager Carney. We'll move on to agenda item three. This is budgeting for community goals review. We're going to start with the Finance and Administrative Services Department. Each department is present to discuss a strategic view of their 2017 budget, cost drivers, concerns and opportunities, and the expected impact on their 2018 budget. Good evening.
Good evening.
Yes, please.
I apologize. Allison, nice article. Thank you very much for doing that.
Oh, yes.
While you were up here, I wanted to say you did a beautiful job on that article for the energy.
They're pitching Inglewood.
We got a copy of it. It says you wrote it.
Yes.
Okay. Don't look surprised now.
Good job.
But thank you very much. A very nice job on that article.
Seeing the fruits of our communications department labor.
Too busy. She doesn't even remember now.
It was a few weeks back, a couple weeks ago.
It's really nicely done.
Director Rinkel?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you for having me. I guess I should get the PowerPoint going. There we go. Okay. So I'd like to start with what our purpose is, and we'll start with our vision. It's empowering employees, citizens, and stakeholders with information and support they can trust. And I was very proud of my team. We worked on this earlier this year to come up with a vision because we had a mission, which is right below it, kind of segmented in bullet points here, because we're committed to safeguarding the city's assets, which includes making sure we comply with general accepted accounting principles, and making sure that we have internal controls, our policies and procedures, and make sure we're monitoring. And we're also custodians of the city records, the historical records, and a source of information for elections. So we support all the elections across city council and the citizens. Key functions, you're probably familiar with most of these. We did add one this year, the financial analysis, where we got the financial analyst in our group. She stayed for about three months because she was commuting from Colorado Springs and said, oh, that's too much, so we're getting a new one at this point. But we're putting in place some analysis for the departments on a monthly basis. We've got that report, and hopefully Eric will give me a little time, a little airtime on the next council meeting, or the study session, I should say. We will review the one for the council so we can take a look at where your actuals are and things are going on. Licensing, we've added recreational marijuana this year, so that's been keeping us busy. On procurement, we've managed, put the contract management in place, so all contracts go through our procurement group so we can make sure that they get to the city attorney and they get all the right approvals and so forth that they need. They get to you when they need to. The other thing that we've got on here is, oh, I've got that on the side. On the contract management side, we've got internal controls now that we've got to focus on and help with that. So those are the big things that have changed over last year. Areas are pretty much the same. We do this with 18 people. It's very manually intensive on all of these areas. So we're hoping for a little mechanization. I'll touch on that later. So our finance and administrative services expenditures, most of it, 84% is personnel costs, that's benefits and salary. And we have a little bit in commodities, 3%, and contractual, where we've got, like MuniRevs and some software and so forth. The next is where we are. This is through April. The time we had to put the package together, we didn't have the May actuals in place, but we did get those, and we're looking pretty close, pretty similar to the way April was, a little higher than last year's May, which is the yellow bars last year. The blue bar is this year. So we're still under budget tracking, and it planned to be there at the end of the year. Talks through some accomplishments and opportunities. Our certificate of achievement for excellence in finance reporting for 2015 was received. We've submitted 16. With the 15 report, we've got 33 consecutive years, and this is a GFOA award. Also, GFOA provides the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. We've got that for 2016, which gives us 16 consecutive years. We started with that a little bit later in their process, and we've submitted 17, so we haven't heard back on that yet. We've completed the 2016 annual audit with the new auditors. That's a pretty big achievement. When you have fresh eyes on things, they typically find stuff that you didn't know you had. We found very, very few minor things, adjusted them to where the new auditor would like to see them, and we're going forward. So we've got a clean report there. And we sold the bonds for the new police headquarters building. We've done some internal automation of data collection. We've automated our employee reimbursement and travel authorizations. That's now a workflow through SharePoint. I'll get it all out right. And it gets put in, and it actually goes through the approval process, so no paper gets lost or sent to somewhere it shouldn't be sent. And then we've done some various HR forms to help HR out, since we have the talent in our group. We've done more robust budgeting, reporting review process, and that's with the directors that I spoke of. We'll bring you a report. We've also launched a cost study methodology, and we're starting with the wastewater treatment plant and looking at those costs and how it relates to the things they want to bill and build. So that will flow into sewer at this point, and then we'll be going forward and looking at some other areas as well. We're in the middle of the installation of the new finance and HR system. We're calling it the ERP, or you might hear it called New World. And we're going to go live with that on October 1st. We are on schedule to do so. We've initiated the document management project, and hopefully Margaret will talk, or she did talk a little bit about putting that in last time she was here. I was supposed to be on with her, so that's the speech that I had prepared. But we'll be looking at implementing that for the city. And a lot of that has to do with what goes into the ERP, so you don't have an invoice filed over here and all the documentation in the system over there. The invoice will be scanned and linked. So when you open up the system, you can see all the supporting documentation right there. And then we're going to add some additional features in iCompass. We're looking at contract review and approval across the city. So not just the contracts that come to the council for approval, but all contracts, so we have them all in one spot. Next one, the challenges. Well, our sales tax processing is looking at being consolidated at state level. At least they've got a study program going to look at that, a task force. And so they'll be looking at that through '18 and providing a recommendation in '19. We're not exactly sure what that'll look like, and the impact is unknown at this point on our sales tax base. So we're a little concerned, but optimistically cautious at this point as to how much concern to really put on it. We're looking at finding additional revenue sources to cover our needs beyond 2019, 2020, because we know we've got some pressures there so that we can maintain our city's financial health. We're looking at funding our capital needs. We fund our capital needs up to the amount of money that we have, and we defer what we can't afford at this point. So the list of deferred needs is getting larger, and we need to take a look at that. We brought forward the police station this year and found a different way of funding that. So we may be looking at some other ways of financing the needs we have. We're going to ensure the rates we charge across the city are supportable and cover costs. That's part of the cost study effort that we've got going, taking a look at our rates and seeing if they're market level. The ERP installation and training, I think that's going to, it is stressing and stretching my personnel in the finance and administrative area. So we are stretched not only doing that, but also trying to So, we are stretched not only doing that, but also trying to help the other organizations with what they need done financially. One thing that's really taking up a lot of our time lately is the core requests. We pretty much have one person entirely dedicated to just managing and getting answers for all the core requests.
What would you say that costs?
One person? Well, at least somewhere between 75 and 100,000 a year.
Forty hours a week.
Mm-hmm. Pretty much.
That's ridiculous.
It's a lot of time, a lot of money.
Is there a way to cost out any one particular request?
We do cost out the requests that take, I'd say, over an hour, and try and provide costs back to the requester to say, "Do you really want us to do this? We'll charge you for it." And most folks say no, but it does take a little time to research. And when you're getting so many, most of them just take an hour or so to do, so you're really not charging. But we do have a lot coming in. Okay. Looking ahead with your guidance, hopefully. These are the things that keep me up at night, and I have to admit that my perspective is not only just local to my group, but also citywide. So, you'll see a little mix of that in here. I'd really like to have some proactive strategies and vision to mitigate any risks. So, some of the things that are going to come by, and we don't know they're going to come, right? But we know that we might have an impact. We might have a disaster. And if we do, or we have a large unknown, what kind of services are we going to provide as a city? Are we going to scale back? How are we going to afford what we need to do? That sort of thing. How do we cover our large emergencies? Do we have a revenue stream change? And how is that going to affect us if there's an economy downturn again? Or if the economy explodes, how are we going to keep up with it all? That would be a good problem to have. And we need continued support for automation and expansion of system capabilities. The more systems you put in place, it helps a lot with efficiencies, but then you find all the things that maybe you should have been doing a while ago and haven't had time to, because you've been so wrapped up in the manual processes. So, I think we'll see a lot of that as we get the ERP in place. We'll see some efficiencies, but then we'll have some new functionality that will go, gee whiz, why didn't we have this before? And we'll start keying into that to make our processes even better. To recap, we serve a wide variety of stakeholders in providing financial records support. We'll continue to provide improved, timely, accurate, and transparent information to all stakeholders. And the finance records needs for the city are going to continue to grow, especially with the growth and economic factors the way they are right now. And we're going to need a strategy to quickly respond, so that we can keep up with all of them. So, let's see. End of my presentation. Any questions?
Thank you. Questions or comments from the council? Councilmember Barrington, did you have anything? Thank you.
You said the sales tax processing consolidation. What exactly does that mean at the state level?
It's a task force that they're putting together. What they're trying to do is collect them in a central location and then divvy it back out to us, versus us collecting our own taxes. At least, that's my understanding of it. We'll get more into it. I think the first meeting is July 11th.
I think particularly as it applies to outside city. I know Manager Keck attended a session specific on this issue at CML. Perhaps you could add a little bit of light to that answer.
Yeah, thanks for the question, Counselor, because this is a big departure than the way it's currently done. So, the Department of Revenue at the state would be collecting all the sales tax. This has been promulgated by many larger businesses who have lots of locations, King Supers, car dealers, American Furniture Warehouse, who get frustrated by making sure they want to make sure money goes where it should go, and they want the state to administer that as opposed to localities. And so, that's what this program's being talked about. So, yeah, we're watching very closely, and I believe Jenny Nolan has been assigned by the city to actually help this task force. She's our revenue manager.
Okay. No, I appreciate that. Obviously, if the state gets involved, we'll see less of our money, so we need to be careful of that.
That's a big concern.
Yeah, I heard that at CML, so I didn't realize that was what this process was. That's awesome. And I know they want local control, and we should have our money first. But on the core requests, I mean, you've always had a certain amount of, I think we've formalized it a little bit more to make sure that people are asking core requests, where I know that, at least through the 20, over 20 years that I've been doing this, a lot of it used to be that you could just go and ask questions and get information from people. So, how are you tracking that information and what it's costing? Because there's certain law, I mean, the law says an hour, and then, you know, you're following the law on how it's going. How are you, how are you not recouping that if the law says they only get an hour of it free?
An hour. We ask them if they want to continue, and we give them an estimate of cost. It takes us a little bit to identify how much it's going to take.
Right.
So, we do have some effort that gets put into that.
And how are you tracking that?
Just basically on the time that they put in. If I've got one person dedicated, I can say it's going to be, it's about this much, between 75 and 100,000. And that's right now. It has picked up. It wasn't that before.
Yeah, if we could know how many are coming through and kind of what's going on. I just asked how it was being tracked, so to put a number out like that, I'm not sure.
And you are correct. We are mechanizing it, so that we'll have better tracking on that going forward.
And then the other budgets, where they had these personnel costs, they at least identified how many people were in there? Did I miss that?
I spoke to it. I did not have it in the package. It's 18 people.
Okay. Eighteen. And then one more. And are they all FTEs? Are they all full-time employees?
Yes, they are.
Okay. Eighteen. And then, you said the ERP, the New World, the training of new processes, and I thought you were going to kind of expand. If there were new process in finance and payroll, what are those new processes that you're doing?
Well, it's a way that you take it from point A to point B, so it's a new workflow entirely. And what we're trying to do is, instead of passing it from this person to this person to this person, losing paper, we'll be mechanizing a lot of that, so that it'll go in a workflow that's defined already. You don't have to try and figure out what you're providing, who you're providing it to. So, it'll mechanize it that way. We also have some efficiencies, so instead of passing it back and forth, it goes directly to where it needs to go. I can't speak to each of them separately at this point, but we do have some workflows that I could provide if you're interested.
Well, I guess what I was concerned about, since you put this under the challenges for the new processes, and we had to find out if there's not new accounting processes.
Oh, no, no. We'll follow gap, always.
Just the way that you're flowing the work.
Right.
But it kind of didn't exactly go into why that was a challenge. I mean, aside from that learning a new system might be frustrating, but I wasn't sure what the rest of it is.
It's training the city on that one. That's what takes up our time.
Oh, so, okay.
Because we're not only going to have to do our regular work, but we're going to have to train the city, all the new processes, all the new systems. How do you do this? Which button do you push there?
So, it's the training the other departments.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
And did you have some, any cost or identify the cost of that additional training in there?
There will be no additional cost to the budget, because we're doing it with existing staff. We're just stressing the staff.
Piling it on.
Well, I don't like that. I mean, that's a cost too, but, I mean, I just am kind of dismayed to hear that.
Those are the people that know how to do the work.
Huh?
Those are the people that know how to do the work, and we knew what we were signing up for when we first started. We do have access to temporary staff as we need it. So, we're bringing people in to do, you know, the simple tasks, the keying, this sort of thing, to help free up the staff to do that.
Okay. Then the cost that's associated with that, if we could just kind of identify that.
It's in the project, but I can get that for you.
Okay. Appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Russell?
Under the challenges, one thing that I don't see there, because there are two ways to increase revenue. We don't have to increase revenue. We can cut spending. And I don't see that in here at all. I mean, it's kind of like, I guess I've always heard this about government. Government doesn't cut spending, because we can go to the taxpayers. So, I think that one thing we need to put in our thought processes is, how are we going to cut spending? Because we could perhaps eliminate a lot of things that were unnecessary.
And I agree. I didn't mention it in here, because we do that consistently. Every time we review the budgets with the directors now on a monthly basis, we say, "Are you sure you're going to spend all this money? What do you need it for? Are you on track?" And they're tracking a whole lot more close than they have in the past.
Okay. But I also want to go back to the mantra that I've been saying since I've been on council. There are certain things that we need. There are certain things that we can cut. If we do not have the money, we have got to cut. Instead of, as opposed to looking to taxpayers for anything, there are ways to cut spending. So, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Martinez?
Thank you for putting this together. My question relates to the topic of large emergencies. So, maybe weather-related or other things. I'm thinking of, like, Lakewood just had that giant hailstorm, you know, that closed Colorado Mills Mall, and I think they're losing something of like $350,000 a month in sales tax or something. Do we have any plan in place or a fund or something that would help us maybe in a large extreme event of that nature?
We have a general fund reserve.
Just general fund reserve?
Basically.
Okay.
Yeah. That's what I'm saying. That's what keeps me up at night, is I don't know that that's going to be enough if we have something that's that size. And what do we do when that happens?
I think the same thing. I worry about that.
Okay.
Thank you.
A couple of comments and maybe some questions. I appreciate the question regarding the sales tax issue. I think that's something for all of council to sort of stay abreast on. Ultimately, I think this is going to turn into a political issue, and at that time, I think we need to be ready to advocate for what's in the best interest of Inglewood, but obviously, we won't know that for some period of time. You know, to Councilmember Russell's point, as well as Councilmember Martinez's point regarding, I think, the questions that were in here about, you know, what sort of keeps you up at night, and, you know, I think this, the first question and this last question, what levels of service do we provide and the revenue stream changes due to economy, I think is something that we're going to be, so hopefully, sort of taking up in this as we prioritize expenses through the Budgeting for Community Goals process. So, I'm hopeful that we can get to that point, saying, hey, here's, you know, whatever we define them as. I know we've used this tiering method in the past internally, and so maybe it's that of, hey, you know, at least we know that if times get really tough, we're not looking at, you know, what we think is the most important, but we've got some second or third category, quartile, or not quartile, but tier, if you will, that, hey, these are the areas we'd be looking to save money, because they're not quite as critical to our operations as, you know, whatever we define as sort of the first tier. So, I'm hopeful we can kind of get to that point in our process here this year. You know, as far as the large emergencies, you know, I think you hit it right on. Ultimately, our policy is to, you know, keep over 16% of our general fund available for those type of issues. I suppose if we worry that that's not high enough, maybe that's a conversation we could have at a later date. But I think that that ensures we're able to operate for two months, I believe, yeah, so a sixth of a year with no additional income. You know, hearing even the, you know, difficult situation I'm sure Lakewood's dealing with, in my mind, that's an adequate reserve to be able to get us over that hump if there were some sort of business, short-term business operation disruption. One thing I wanted to mention, I guess, is the hearing officer function of your department and you. And without getting into our current case, you know, I assume that, you know, at some point, we'll be discussing about, you know, who's the appropriate body. We've talked about moving towards hearing officers and these type of things in the past, and so maybe this is just kind of putting council on notice that at some point, this should probably be discussed and determined as a policy, you know, how we want to deal with that, because I'm not so sure the way you've got it structured is the best way to do it. Any further comments or questions regarding finance? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to move us on to the next department under Agenda Item Three, Budgeting for Community Goals Review, and that is the City Attorney's Office.
Excuse me, pause. You have a text message. Sorry, sorry. Sorry. Excuse me, pause. You have a text message.
Turn it over to our city attorney, Allison McKinnney-Brown.
Good evening, everybody. I have really enjoyed watching these budget presentations from the other departments, because it gives me an insight, not just in what's happening with those departments, but how the city thinks, and how the department directors are coming back and saying, this is the direction their department is going, and this is how they are moving those directions within their budget. So, it's really an exciting way to deal with budget and all the issues associated with the city. So, I recognize that tonight, I can't do that, because I've been here not quite three months. But I can give you a starting place, which gives you an idea of what my vision for the City Attorney's Office is moving forward. So, let's see. The first thing is, it is important to me that the City Attorney's Office be an active player within the city. We don't sit back with our door locked. We are actively involved with the departments all day long, every day. And what we want to do is provide that last key piece that lets all the departments go forth and be proactive. Because if they can proactively do what it is they need to do, we're able, on the flip side, to avoid issues that may result in litigation. And it doesn't matter if it's Public Works or Finance or the City Clerk's Office. If they know going forward what the steps are, everybody in this city is willing to do those things to provide better services. Okay, I think I just turned it off. And we're done. So, this is our organizational chart. Anybody who's called in the last two weeks has heard our new executive assistant answer the phone. She does not know your names and voices yet, but she will soon. She's just great. She was the executive assistant to the county manager in Nevada for 20-plus years. So, I'm just thrilled we were able to get her here. But we have a great staff, and I think, moving forward, we've got everybody in place. We also have an intern this summer, who I hope in two years to add to the group of city attorneys in Colorado. So, what is it that we do? Well, all ordinances and resolutions are drafted within the City Attorney's Office. We prepare, review, and approve all legal documents. Whatever is a legal document starts with us. And we review policies and procedures. We do code updates. We write memorandums to the departments, to the council members, and we find ourselves responding to a lot of citizen requests, which is something we have to do carefully, because our office is not permitted to give legal advice to citizens. We are, our client is the city organization and the city council itself. But there occasionally are questions about, how does this work, or how does that run, and those kinds of things that we respond to. So, probably at least an hour of city attorney time, either myself or Dugan Comer's, goes Comers, goes to responding to citizen requests daily. We are present at all public meetings, at which there's going to be a majority of a quorum, and it doesn't matter if that means you're on a field trip to the wastewater farm or interviewing boards and commissioners or actually sitting at a meeting. Either myself or my assistant attorney is in the room. And we have also, we also staff various boards and commissions, the Planning and Zoning Board of Adjustment, Liquor and Marijuana Board. We represent this city in all legal proceedings. Now, I need you to know that if it's intensive litigation, something that's going to require several weeks to several months to prepare for the litigation and then sit in a courtroom for several weeks, we do that through outside counsel. But less intensive litigation issues, including prosecution, municipal court, responding to subpoenas in district court, representing the city at administrative hearings, and representing the city in personnel actions, those lower-level types of administrative litigation, we handle in-house. And in the last year, no, that's not even true, in the last four months since March, because I got here in April, even more of that has been brought in-house. And I think you'll see that as we go back through, as we go through this presentation. We also work with outside counsel and special counsel, so I meet with them regularly. And that's all the different issues that impact the city. And we monitor counsel retained to support departments, and that is the water attorney, basically the firm that provides support for water purposes, and the wastewater plant attorneys as well. And I've met with wastewater plant attorneys three times already, and I'll be meeting with the water attorneys in two weeks, just to know what it is they're working on and, and what issues they see on the horizon. Okay, so 2016, '17 accomplishments, for the most part, are not mine, but I'm putting them up there so you can know that you had a very active City Attorney's Office before I got here. However, when we get into 2017 to date, quite a few, we've picked up the pace just because there's two of us working now. Been in 2016, apparently 275 contracts went through the City Attorney's Office, 56 ordinances were written, 100 resolutions, and 434 separate action items were reviewed and approved. This year, we're on target to do at least that amount, if not more. And in addition to that, I have completed the draft Personnel Manual, and I believe that that's getting ready to be disseminated to the staff. I've updated a CORA policy that professionalizes the process, so we avoid the time-taking of question-answer, and it's ju, and the CORA process is a process for getting documents, not responding to questions. And that encourages people who have questions come and talk to the staff. It's actually going to save time and money if, if you just come and ask them your questions. And we have to do this through the CORA process. We have to, we have to monitor what's happening and, and know exactly what went out and how long we took and all those other things. We've also had seven administrative hearings and lawsuits resolved, so things have been moving forward on all sorts of fronts. So the budget, the vast majority of the budget goes to Personnel Services. We are budgeted to have $130,000 in outside legal fees. You need to understand that's a budget, and I'm not sure exactly what that means yet. The reason I'm not sure exactly what that means yet is, I'm going to get to on the next couple of slides. Other contractual services at $36,000, that's what we're budgeted for, again. I'm not sure, since there's now two of us, where we're coming with and that. It's going to take me a year to monitor the budget and, and see what it takes with the two of us, where we'll fill within this. Commodities, office supplies, legal books, those kinds of things. So most of the costs that go through the City Attorney's Office are legal costs, the costs of our personnel and outside legal. This is our budget, and yellow lines are last year, when you're working with an attorney short. The blue lines are this year, just through April, which, again, seems to be working in attorney short. So we're below, but that's actually not clearly representative because a large, a large chunk of costs come through to us in December that, so we'll look like we're way below, and then in December, we'll hit it, or that's what's happened historically. Again, I need a year to track what it's going to be like with the two of us in there. When I was hired, I was asked to get control of outside legal costs. And I've really been monitoring that because I wanted to know what those numbers were. About $500,000 a year of outside legal costs are our water attorneys. And since the city's water rights are probably the most valuable thing the city owns, I have no recommendation to touch that with a 10-foot pole at this point. They have been doing a great job of protecting those water rights within an environment where everybody's water rights are constantly in litigation. So I'll be meeting with them in a couple of weeks and, and talking to them about where they see things going and that, that sort of thing. But right at the moment, that's where most of those costs go, is, is water. Another large part of outside legal costs goes to the wastewater plant. They also have outside counsel, again, who do amazing work and are experts in environmental issues. Let me go back. Wasn't sure what my next slide was. The actual, the actual amount of outside counsel costs that I may have a direct impact upon are that $130,000 you saw on the previous slide, and even though it's not directly under my control, the costs that are handled by risk management, cases that might get turned over for insurance. And I'm visiting with Joan, who handles the SIRSAC cases. I talk to her quite a bit because I'm trying to figure out that interrelationship at this point. The $130,000 wasn't $130,000 in previous budgets. The city manager, listening to my, my issues associated with controlling outside counsel costs, he moved line items for outside counsel directly into the City Attorney's Budget that had not been there before. And that happened, I think, at the end of March, so right as I was coming on board. So again, I'm not sure where, you know, how all of this is going to play out. But what that means is that outside counsel costs that have been dealt with through HR, because HR's had access to an attorney that they've called regularly, those, those requests for assistance are supposed to come directly to the City Attorney's Office at this point. If we're overwhelmed and can't get to it, well, then we'll seek outside counsel. But those are now supposed to be step one, coming to us, and they are. And also, the Police Department, their line item came to the City Attorney's Office, and again, their first step is supposed to be with the City Attorney's Office. We're going to, we are going to have to monitor for a year what kind of impact this has overall. But you can see, I, I think it's an exciting first step, seeing what it is we can do in-house to start getting control of these costs.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
On the chart that you have here, what, what is this number?
I'm seeing zero, $20,000, $40,000, $60,000, $80,000. Oh, and what does, it's supposed to be the amount spent. So it looks like in 2012-
Okay, but when you said that the majority of this is, just for example, you said $500,000 of that, generally a year, is water rights, this didn't go up to 500,000?
No, and, and these are the outside counsel costs that have been within the City Attorney's Budget. The $500,000 a year, that's within Tom Brennan's budget, and the $250,000 a year, that's within wastewater budget. So that's not directly under my control.
Yeah, so when you were given the information, and it made it seem as if this was a chunk of this money, so then I thought maybe this was representative of-
Yeah.
More than 20,000.
No, this is the money directly within the City Attorney's Budget. However, when council as a whole was talking to me about outside legal expenses, I understood that to mean you wanted me to be aware of all outside legal expenses that are happening and seeing if there's anything within the City Attorney's authority or control we can do to control those. That's the water budget and the wastewater. So for all that I don't have direct control over water, wastewater, or even the SIRSAC budget, the risk management, I'm talking to those people and figuring out what's happening and is there, is there anything we can do locally?
Like urban renewal. So when there was an open records request for the outside councils, all of that showed on that report as outside council being paid by the city, because it's being paid by the city. So whether it's under your control or not, okay.
Yeah.
So I see that you're combining the two. That's fine. All right, thanks for clarifying it.
So 2017 projects, actually just visited the city manager about some council policy manual updates and some ideas, and we're actually moving forward on that to get something back to you sooner rather than later. After the rest of the staff completes their updates to the Boards and Commissions' policy, they'll be turning that back to me, and then I, I've told you before, I'd like to use that information to update Chapter Two of the, of the City Code. The, we are in the middle of developing cell tower and small cell code provisions for the city. Got to move forward on that one pretty quickly. We've already reviewed and updated the personnel policy, but that's going to be an ongoing project as, especially working with the new Human Resources Director, and she begins to implement her vision. We have been and will continue to be reviewing and updating the open records procedures because that's taking a large chunk of staff time from finance. And if they can get those under control and make sure everybody's being treated identically, and we know the information to maintain, we're hoping to cut that back to less than one full-time position to respond to those. I'll, I am working with departments. Right now, I'm working with wastewater, but I'll be working with all departments within the city to develop department-specific records retention policies. So we're, we're maintaining those in a standardized manner in conformance with the records retention standards set forth by the state. And I just met with the, the Courts Director, and she's asked that we look at the traffic code because it hasn't been updated in quite a while. So there's lots of code updates that we're looking at doing as well, and all of that stuff, we're, we're going to try to get to this year. So what are our goals? Well, you just heard, we, there's more for us to do than we could possibly get done. We need to look at how to manage the work volume that's coming through the, the department. And again, we, we're giving ourselves a full year to be overwhelmed because goal one is to give the departments the, the support they need to be proactive. And by doing that, we think we're going to cut back litigation and legal costs for the city as a whole. We think that doing that in the short, short term has the greatest long-term payoff to the city. But over time, we really need to figure out how to manage work volume because it's, we're always two steps behind. I've already talked to you about we're monitoring outside council costs and already looking at different places we can cut outside council costs back. We are incorporating technology in the City Attorney's Office. We didn't have technology for many years, and I can tell you the typewriters are gone, and-
Excellent.
Yeah, and everybody's now on, on email. So that's getting exciting. We are looking at the big place, and, and right now, we're under contract, so it's not something I can do immediately, but I'm meeting with all of our outside media providers, that's law books and online resources. I've got meetings set up with all of them during July because I want to know how much of that I can cut back. I, that's just seems to me a place I can look for money in my budget. And I, we will continue to make providing organizational CORA procedures a priority for the entire organization. Policy considerations, I'm going to be coming back to you for guidance on. First are what your priorities are for the workload. I mean, there are two of us, and there's a lot of work to be done. So as a body, what, what the seven of you prioritize as your goal clearly has to be our goal. We're going to be looking to you for support for annual code updates. The fact that our code hasn't been updated regularly means that we're starting out in a hole. I really would like to get to a point where you, you as a body know, well, it's September 1st, Allison's going to be bringing this year's proposed code, code updates back, back to us for review so that by December 1st, we can, we can approve those. And, and not have to be concerned what's, what's happening, but just to understand. We need to be updating things regularly so that we stay in conformance with state law, with recent, with recent case decisions, and also with the needs of the city. There may be things we can do to control budget. One of the things the mayor was mentioning at the end of the last presentation was that he's not happy with the hearing officer procedure. Well, I'm not happy with the hearing officer procedure either because it's weird. For some of them, we have in-house people. For others, I'm just supposed to go find somebody and appoint them. For others, it comes back to council. It makes sense to me that we go through our code, find all the places that hearing officers are required, come back to council and say, here's a name of five local attorneys who are willing to serve regularly on a rotating basis as hearing officers. And that way, whenever we need someone, we just start at the, at the top of the list. Who was the last one chosen? Ask the next person. That way, it just cycles. Everyone knows there's five names. They know that we're not cherry-picking names to look at them. It's not in-house. We can set a standardized fee to pay them instead of just whatever it is they want to pay. There are things we can do by updating the code that control the budget, but we've got to get on top of that stuff. And then, of course, I would really like to bring back the decorum policy and updates to the code of conduct that will give you guys a little bit more control over your meeting and, and make you guys more comfortable as you meet. So those are the policy considerations I'll be coming back to you for regularly. So here's our recap. We're going to basically use 2017 to get our feet underneath of us. That's just really what we're doing. And that means monitoring the budget, monitoring what stakeholders' needs are, and continuing to monitor our work output. I stand for questions.
Questions or comments? Councilmember Olson.
Thank you. Great presentation, and you've learned a lot in just a few short months about the city of Inglewood. Thank you. What I wanted to ask you, just to explain a little bit more about the small cell service and where we are in comparison. I think we're way behind, but we didn't know we were behind and-
We are way behind. Effect, federal law changed approximately two years ago regarding small cell technology. And you're going to get a report on this for your review in the next couple of weeks, but generally, federal law changed, saying that if, that cities had less authority to control what was happening with putting small cell wireless technology within the city. And giving, giving us what's called shot clocks, so that if someone comes to the city and says, I want to start installing that, we have a set number of days within which we can either license it and approve it, or it gets, it gets to go in without our approval. So federal law kicked in. Then Colorado Legislature adopted their own version, which goes into effect July 1. We don't have a local code that correlates to what the state legislature did. I can tell you, we will have one, and we'll be bringing something back to you within July. The city manager and I are negotiating dates when we can get that done. But basically, at this point, we are already meeting with providers, and there will be small cells going into our right-of-ways. The form that we'll take, I can't tell you at this point. How soon that will happen, I can't tell you, but I can tell you it will happen, and, and we've got to get on top of it. Again, it's just one more thing we're behind on.
Does it include a community notice of some sort that allows them to know what's going on? Because people get really nervous about that kind of stuff.
People do get nervous. And the, the federal law actually takes a lot of that ability away from the local governments. For example, people used to be afraid that they were going to get gamma radiation from cell towers and that kind of stuff. Federal government doesn't even allow you to ask those questions anymore.
And then the, the second question I had has to do with the CORA, and maybe this is more for City Manager Keck. If in, I think, when we asked Director Winkle to come up with some information about it, if we could also find out how many people does it represent? Is it, you know, is it one person asking a lot? Is it five people asking a lot? Is it 100 people? I, I think it'd be really helpful to know. And public record, I think it should be clear as to what, what's happening with that as well.
I'll add that to the council request that I took earlier.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Got a couple of comments, maybe a question. Number one, I just appreciate the proactive role of the City Attorney's Office generally. Appreciate that, you know, that's a major focus and kind of looking to be proactive on these issues citywide. Appreciate that you're sitting in on a ton of meetings citywide and getting to know the community in different departments. So I just wanted to start off with saying that I really appreciated that approach and perspective coming from the City Attorney's Office. I also appreciate you looking into media costs. You know, sometimes I wonder about, you know, with such a small department, you know, how much we're spending on, you know, materials and things that are probably available on a one-off basis as needed and might be cheaper, is my thought. You know, I wanted to go back to the small cell code. I, you know, I am losing a little bit of sleep over this. Perhaps we could get an update, you know, prior to July 1. I mean, is there any, you know, process or intervention, you know, perhaps that the council could do, or is there an emergency meeting that could be beneficial here or anything of that nature? Perhaps you could update us and let us know whether you think something like that might be necessary.
Okay.
Thank you. Councilmember Martinez.
I just want to say thank you so much. We're so happy to have you, and I know you're doing so much and taking it all in, and thank you so much for doing that. I had a question, more, I guess, of a comment, that I really appreciate looking at outside council costs, and I'm, I didn't realize how large that was, and I think it makes a lot of sense to have all, anything legal come through you first. I, maybe it wasn't like that before. But also had a question about the intern. That's really exciting. And what kind of things is the intern helping out with?
She, she's great. She is, has just finished her first year of law school at CU, and she drives over from Boulder every day, not every day, three days a week. And what projects we're having her work on, actually, I've got her working on three council requests because the council requests required some legal research. So she's working on those. But the additional thing, we've, there's also an intern with the City Managers Department, and there's several projects that we are putting the two interns together and having them jointly work on to come up with answers for the city as a whole. They're just an exciting team, and, and honestly, I'm thrilled to have her on board.
That's great. Glad to hear it.
Further questions or comments for City Attorney's Office? Thank you for that report. Move us on to the last presentation, which is the City Managers- Move us on to the last presentation, which is the city manager's office for this agenda item. Turn it over to manager Keck.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Get to the right slide here. So city manager's office, just as a departmental overview, I mean, primarily, my function is, basically enunciated by the charter. So Article 7 of the city's Home Rule Charter, and we'll get into some of those specific details of that later. We're really only comprised of three full-time and one part-time employee. So city manager, assistant city manager, thank you, strategy and innovation officer, and an executive assistant. Krista only works 30, I say only, she works 30 to 32 hours a week, flexible schedule. We provide programs and services primarily that support good governance. That's our, that's our major role. So we're tying back to our community goals and our, our priority results. That's what we do. And we provide leadership and guidance for, you know, strategic and functional operation of the business side of the organization. So that's, encompasses a many, many different things, and we'll go over those here in a few minutes as well. So some of our core services and budget drivers are these. Basically, you know, it's making sure that the laws are being applied, that you actually set, and obviously those are already within our code. Leadership and management of our employees. Preparation and management of the budget, that's specifically called out for me to do in the charter, working in concert, obviously, with our financial and administrative services department. Supervision and control overall, executive and admin departments. And then also informing the public, and this is something that, as you're well aware, we've really been focusing on a lot more lately. Not only the activities of the city council, but obviously of, of the administrative departments as well. And then lastly, we want to work, and we do work, I believe, in collaboration with the council for the creation and establishment of strategic direction for the overall city. So here is our budget. If you look at this, not dissimilar to finance, our personnel costs are 84% of our, the total budget. Then you can see there, too, we have some contractual cost as well as commodities, which are our smaller portion that make up, make up our budget. So our current budget status, again, through the month of April, again, we just got, you'll see May's data tonight, we are again on target for where we need to be with the budget. And as you can see, it's less than 2016. And again, the reason for this is that we've carved out the communication function and created its own department. So that's why that is the case, where we're less. So our work program for 2017, quite frankly, is simplistic. It's to ensure the implementation of what we're calling the Inglewood Five. And again, those five topical things are the compensation plan, looking and ensuring that we're enhancing our performance management system. And of course, that's the work that's being done largely by our human resources department. But this is encompassing making sure that, again, every department's in alignment and working together to ensure that they're creating a system that will prove to be functional for our employees. Right now, we have an automated system. It's called NeoGov. We use the Perform system that I think you've heard about from our HR director. It's a good system, but the actual instrument that we use to rate employees isn't exactly where I would like to see it to be. It has some, some functions that frankly shouldn't be there. Lastly, not lastly, but we also are spending a significant amount of time on workplace safety. We heard this from our employees who work not only in the field, in the streets at Public Works, at our different plants that we have. They're concerned about safety and making sure they have the right tools and equipment. Those who work on the street are very concerned about traffic because people do not obey traffic laws, and they're working in those particular environments and they're concerned about it. But also obviously concerned with the safety of those who do transact business with us as well, in this, in this building as well as others. We've been working to enhance that safety. Communication improvements, again, you're well aware of what we're doing in that realm, but again, we're constantly trying to enhance that, to find new and better ways of getting information to our residents, as well as those who would wish to do business with us. And then lastly, fiscal strategy. This is a very, very important one. Not only does it encompass the budget and encompass many of the things that have been discussed here this evening with our financial administrative services department, and we really do see that finding ways to contain our budget is a three-legged stool. Again, as most people would say, as an MBA primer, there's three ways to make money. You can increase your, increase your sales, and for us, increasing sales is bringing more businesses into our community. Increasing our margin, that would be taking a look at the fee structure that we have, looking at the tax structure that we have. And lastly, which is something that, as was enunciated earlier, that we look at very carefully and do on a daily basis, is containment of cost. We've had to do containment of cost, only from the standpoint that sales tax is very unpredictable. And in order to continue to provide the level of services to the residents and businesses that expect it, there hasn't been really a change in the tax structure here in the city of Inglewood for, for many years, and that's that base property tax level. And of course, we all know that $3.2 million of property tax doesn't go very far. It's, we're living on, on sales tax. So again, it goes back to increasing our sales and bringing more people into town, small businesses mainly, who are going to help us with sales tax growth. So major challenges. What we're seeing right now, and I, this is what keeps me up at night, so to speak, would be the impending retirement of many of our seasoned employees. We have a number of folks who have been here for a very long time, and when they leave, if it's not written on paper or not put into some procedure or policy someplace, we're losing that particular institutional knowledge. And so that's, that's extremely something that we're looking at very carefully. And that's why you're seeing us try to accelerate learning of the organization, but also trying to automate many of the things that we do. We are so thankful for the council's support with the new ERP system that will help us to implement best practices and processes, to coincide with the financial policies that are already in place, to really help us with, again, trying to not lose that, that institutional knowledge. Fiscal sustainability and viability, we've talked about this a great deal on great lengths here, and I think we're making some strides in that direction as well. So cost containment has been something that, you know, we've been able to implement from the top down, but now we're actually reaching out to our employees through our fiscal strategies committee to actually come up with ideas from them. The employees who are in the trenches, who are on the front lines providing services are going to be giving us back ideas, feeding us back ideas that we can implement, and we're trying to find ways in which to reward that type of, of behavior as well for cost containment, process improvement. We're looking for ways in which to fund key capital infrastructure projects and finding funding sources for that. It's no surprise, or it doesn't, should be of any new news to the council and to the public that we have aging infrastructure in Inglewood, and we are looking for ways in which to prioritize those capital projects and finding streams of revenue and/or funding that we can make sure that we're addressing it to stave off having to fully replace those, that infrastructure, because it's very, very expensive. Mainly our roads is, is one of the things that's very expensive, and so are, so are our bridges. And then lastly, one of our challenges is the redevelopment of underperforming commercial properties. We know that big box in America in general is, is disappearing. And with that, though, comes the disappearing nature of our sales tax as well. And so we wish to work collaboratively, but get out of the way of the private sector to do what they do best. But specifically, we're trying to find ways in which we can encourage, incent, to a certain extent, the redevelopment of some commercial properties to begin to, again, give back more fully to the, to the public and to the community. So some budget and policy considerations. Here's where we really would like to work more so with the council and talk strategically. We do an outstanding job, I think, of, of looking at transactions. This council is very good at transactional conduct. So we bring you a contract, you either approve it or disapprove. But we really need to start thinking more strategically. And some of those strategic things are these. What opportunities do we have for regional cooperation and additional public-public partnerships for service delivery? Now, this doesn't necessarily mean that we're looking to outsource all of the functions of the city or looking to contract that out, but conversely, I'm thinking more entrepreneurially. Where could the city actually, where we do really well with functions, do that with other governmental entities, such as what we're already doing for Cherry Hills Village and Sheridan, for example, by providing them with fleet service? We have an excellent fleet manager, an excellent fleet facility. What other opportunities are there for us to do public-public partnerships and, and look at that? Because public-public collaboration is going to be the future of how governments are going to survive in the, in this revenue declining, declining revenue environment. We also need to look at leveraging of city-owned assets. We have significant number of parcels of land that we're not utilizing, believe it or not. As I was looking over the land census, if you will, that we have with SIRS, we have a lot of parcels that, that we just own, that we don't even do anything with. It just sits there. We just maintain the land. What can we use that land for? What facilities that we're underutilizing can we lease to other folks to help bring in additional revenue that could help substantiate the operations of the city? This is a little edgy. Most cities don't like to be landlords, but in the instance where we have the opportunity to, to rent facilities, such as the T-Hone Fire Station, which has American Striping Company operating out of there and paying us rent on a monthly basis, where, what other opportunities do we have like that where we can look at leveraging those assets more? It's the challenges that have laid down to wastewater treatment. How can we utilize the additional land that we have on that site? Could we lease that to someone to do solar gardens, small-scale solar garden? Can we work collaboratively with the private sector on a wind project? Are there opportunities such as that that exist for us to, again, obtain some revenues for the land that the public already owns? Obviously, this was mentioned by the, the attorney as well, and that is charter amendments to clean up and modernize our language. In many instances, not only our charter but our codes, there's just antiquated language. And I struggle every time I look at the charter and specifically for my area, that I'd hope council's not holding me accountable for each and every one of those items, because obviously, we don't have an airport, and it says I'm in charge of the airport. I love airplanes and love to fly, so if you want to start one, I'm, I'm there. But, you know, it's just things like that that are idiosyncrasies within our codes that we need to clean up. And then lastly, this isn't to state that we're going to ask you to increase taxes, but we really need to do a study of revenue and taxation to, to study that and ensure our sustainability. This also looks at our, our cost containment. And I think this gets to what the method of, methodology of what you've heard from several department directors is that is, we need council support to help us to prioritize those things above and beyond what the charter says we should be doing. There's obviously ways in which to look at the functions that we provide currently as a city that are stretched perhaps beyond what the charter says, but we need to make sure that we have those priorities so that we can begin to plan effectively to, to be sustainable. So in conclusion, we're going to continue, or my office is going to continue to work on a cultural transformation to create a higher-performance organization. The organization which I inherited was, they performed very well. We have great employees. But what we didn't have was an alignment with strategy, alignment with focus, a specific direction. And that's, that's what I'm talking about here is this cultural transformation. We certainly wish to continue to work and desire to work collaboratively with council on policy and strategy. As I stated, you know, we're really good with transaction, but we need to move more intentionally and with, with alacrity, I think, towards strategy as well. So then not only are we looking out for today, but we're looking out longer term. I recognize that sometimes that's difficult because we're just bombarded with folks who want to obtain something or some permissions from the city or approvals, but again, this is something that I think we as staff yearn to do, spend more time on strategy. With that, I, I guess I'm sitting, I'd say stand for questions, but answer any questions you might have.
Councilwoman Olson.
Thank you. This is a great report. I have a couple of questions, and maybe some of them are just council requests as well. Thanks for reminding me that's 3.2 million in property tax. That's all we get. Someone asked me that the other day.
Yes.
They were going on and on about taxes, and I tried to tell them the percent, but I didn't know the total amount, so that's good. Thank you. What, what do you have in store for succession planning? Because I, it, I think eight years ago, it scared the daylights out of me.
Yeah.
How, how much knowledge is going to be lost with it? Is there a plan for every department in trying to think through?
There is.
Documentation as well as development of some of our other workers?
It is, and it's, it's difficult in this day and age, obviously, with 2.3% unemployment. I think many of you who sat in the, in the governor's speech this past week at CML, 2.3% unemployment creates some issues.
Yeah.
People don't leave jobs because of the job. People leave jobs because of people. And so one of the things that we're trying to be more intentional is, is making sure that our managers have the, the appropriate competencies to be able to adequately help build up the next generation. And we're, working with our departments, we are really focusing on trying to create a, an environment that does more to, I think, retain our, our high potential employees. And we want to figure out how we can help get them into positions where they can stretch and grow. So we've really been working to put people in a, in an uncomfortable position, younger folks, and then some less seasoned folks, to actually get that experience and stretch. Several examples, you know, one of them's sitting here in the room tonight, and I'll just point her out, because I think she's done an outstanding job, and that's our acting city clerk. She's been thrust into a position where she's had to figure things out. And so we, we are really working in areas such as that to really build that next generation of, of any, in any department, and try to educate folks. And wherein we have the ability to do so, send people for additional schooling, whether that's externally, our tuition reimbursement program to help, help with education. But we are also working to just ensure that, again, we're working with intentionality to help develop that next, next level. And it's, it's a struggle because not everybody has that ability to do that. But I think where we're, we're trying to do is, is more of a group approach. Each of us is directors, sit around and we figure out who some of our higher potential employees are and where we can actually give them an opportunity to manage a project and put in a position where they can learn and grow.
Thank you. And the other, the other two questions have to do with the budget and policy considerations slide, and that's the public-public partnerships.
Yeah.
What would be some possible areas? What, what?
Well, I don't want to, I don't want to have any of our employees begin to panic.
Okay, so yeah, yeah. Actually, maybe, maybe just general.
Yeah.
Maybe you can't.
That's kind of tough to say general, because some of them are very specific.
Yeah.
Just know and understand that one of the hallmarks of the original methodology that we've undertaken with our budgeting is to look at five fundamental questions. Those questions are, is there a mandate for the program? Who else can provide this program? Is there a increasing or decreasing demand for those programs? And specifically, look for opportunities for collaboration. So we're looking for those opportunities now. And, and, you know, we are in conversation with other governmental entities right now to actually take on additional functions, wherein we can, wherein we are not taking a dino leap, if you will, that we're precariously going to be hanging on. That's a climbing term, by the way. I'm hanging out with my new friends at EarthTrex. But if you make a move, it's called a dino move, where you're just leaping and you're hoping and praying that you're going to hang on to that rock.
Want to do that very much.
We're not doing that. But where we know that we have the capacity to take on additional functionality, such as at the service center, if we can, you know, repair Littleton's vehicles, I'm, we're not talking with them.
Right, right, right. But that's an example.
That's an example. Yeah. Where we know that we're very good, we're very adept at a function, we're going to keep doing it.
But it's more about us giving service to others than us giving our, asking someone else to do for us.
Correct. However, that, that may be on the table as well. And I, I joke all the time, and I really don't joke, I'm serious about it. Nothing is off the table at this point, because again, we know very clearly and loudly that we don't want to bring something forward to this particular policy body that's going to have you say, well, we got to increase taxes because we don't have any other way to do it. But if you put us into a, it's not being put us into a box, but so to speak, but saying, if we're going to have to cut in order to provide programs, even though the charter says we have to provide it, doesn't necessarily, we, we have to directly provide it. If we can find somebody else, whether it's a public or private, we're going to look at that very closely, weigh the pros and cons, and then bring that forward.
And the last one would be the leveraging of city-owned assets. Do you already have a list of those that could be made available to us, or?
Yes.
I'd love to see the list of...
We have a rudimentary list of those. So we've got Public Works has land all throughout the town, specifically lots. We've got, we, we, as you're well aware, we actually tried to enter into a lease agreement with Cherry Hills Village for, the service center property has some area in the back. We are hopeful that they would have designed and built their Public Works facility there since the Cherry Hills Village residents didn't want it in their community. Said, great, we'll take it. Here's what the cost is. It was market rate. They decided to buy their own parcel and develop it in Sheridan. But yeah, we're, we're looking for opportunities like that. But as we move forward, we certainly can provide you with that list of parcels.
Let's just get a list and see things that I haven't thought about before.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Russell?
Actually, you said there were five things, five steps that you looked for. I only heard three.
Okay. So let me, let me think back, and if I can't get all these right off the top of my head, I'll, I'll make sure I get them. But there are five fundamental attribute questions. And again, mandate, as a mandate for the service, are there other players that could do this particular service? Is there an increase or decrease in those, in those services? And the other two are escaping me, but I will send them to you.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
I think those have been provided in the past via the...
Yeah.
...priority-based budgeting kind of guidelines.
Priority-based budgeting kind of guidelines.
Yep.
And the five questions for ranking them in quartiles, and they asked those five questions, I believe.
Yep, that's exactly right, Mayor. Good memory.
Um, you know, I just wanted to add a couple of comments, you know, thank you, uh, first of all, a great presentation and, uh, you know, a great job sort of, you know, sometimes like we've got so much on our table, you know, hearing your reiteration, I think, of some of those goals and objectives and, you know, knowing that that's mirroring up, I think, with what the council wants is always reassuring. So thank you again for that. Um, you know, I had a quick question regarding the communication department. What is the net increase in spending, uh, organization-wide on communications?
Good question. I'd have to look at specifically that budget to understand what that number is. Basically, what we have right now is one and a half employees before we had one.
Yeah.
Um, so there's that half.
Probably the half FTE.
Half FTE plus the additional functionality of, of the magazine above and beyond what we expensed before. Mr. Mark Robinson, you have a number?
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, a great question. Um, actually, that is not, the half FTE is not an addition, as that was brought from Parks and Rec.
Great.
And so we were, we were very careful to not increase the budget too much, um, for this new year, for, or, for the new department this year, um, as most of the allocations have come from Parks and Rec and other, um, other, I use Parks and Rec because that was the, uh, the main folks that put out another, uh, publication, but, uh, come from other, uh, departments in terms of the funding piece. We did however, um, increase the budget at about 70,000, um, for events, special events, and that's for the additional events, um, that you all, um, asked for, um, for us to do this, uh, this year. And so that is, that's pays for everything though, for those events, to include Fourth of July, so.
So in your mind, the communications piece was fairly zero-sum in that you were able to take some of those, um, from other departments, allocations from some other departments to create that, uh, department without any additional real cost? Sounds like the real additional cost is in this new event.
I would never say that, um, something is fairly zero-sum. I think it's either zero-sum or it isn't. Um, and so, um, no, I wouldn't say it's zero-sum because we did add some dollars, uh, for the events and whatnot, but, um, I would say that it was minimal, um, cost. And I, again, that's, I think that's a council request and it's being, uh, drafted for you. You'll see the communications budget.
Appreciate that. Um, you know, I, I guess I just wanted to, you know, um, you know, second the idea of, hey, let's take a look at, you know, what are these, uh, parcels that we're talking about and, you know, can we look at some long-term leasing of those parcels? Uh, you know, in my mind, I wonder if we need, you know, if that's something we can handle in-house, or if that's something, you know, we want to use a brokerage relationship for. You know, I know that I was contacted by one individual, you know, private business owner who wanted to lease a lot that we own that we're not doing anything with, so I just passed that along to staff and, um, you know, I know that they've been working to, to try to bring something forward. Uh, but perhaps that's something, you know, likely to be, did with McClellan, you know, perhaps that's something to consider. Are the McClellan reservoir, you know, updates coming back to you? I know they're reporting to the body. Uh, any leasing activity or any updates there?
Yeah, I, I'm not aware of that, uh, because I'm not on the McClellan Reservoir Board. However, uh, in, when I asked, uh, Tom Brennan, who's the president of that, there is activity, and they're actually going to be preparing a report that could be sent to the city council because there is interest, uh, right now on several of those, those remaining parcels.
Great, thank you. And again, I'll just reiterate, my preference, of course, is to long-term lease these assets. Like you said, I, you know, I don't know that we, uh, intended to be landlord on some of these, but I would feel more comfortable with a long-term revenue stream created, created off of, you know, long-term leases, uh, for any underutilized properties. Um, you know, also, I guess just second or reiterate the, you know, I think we'd like to get to a, a fairly comprehensive fee review. I know that, you know, multiple departments are talking about that and we appreciate, um, your efforts there. Um, you mentioned a potential charter update, um, you know, what timing are you thinking for that? I know the charter requires a convention, or I'm not sure what term it uses to describe the beginnings of a charter update process.
Yeah, there's a number of ways that charter amendment can transpire, um, just like the city council, uh, two years ago did a charter, charter amendment, um, to address some of the aspects of the charter. You as a council can put that forward, residents can also put that forward. Um, so what we would like to do is, I've already performed a cursory review, I haven't given my notes to this Allison because I know she's been buried, but, um, compare notes, bring something forward to the city council if you entertain. It wouldn't be for this November, obviously, but it would be for a, um, a future year for the, for the city to deal with at a general election.
Thank you. Other questions or comments for City Manager's Office? Councilmember Russell?
Going back to the, um, increase in spending on communication, I'm not sure that I like the, um, the analogy of taking money from Parks and Recs or cutting Parks and Rec. Is that showing that they have decreased their budget? Because I don't think that's absolutely fair. I think it should stand alone on its own, and I believe Parks and Rec is going to be having some difficulties funding, um, uh, the Parks Ma, Parks and Rec Master Plan.
Yeah, I can allay your fears on that. The Parks budget was not, was not reduced. This was a function that was occurring within Parks already. They had a, a full-time employee, uh, a while back, if you remember Megan, I can't remember her last name because she got married and it changed. She was their person who dealt with, um, creating public documents, she helped with the recreation guide. So that function has merely been shifted over and centralized because we want to have a central, uh, place where communication could be managed and done. So, right now, Allison Carney has taken on that same role of creating flyers and, and doing the things to help to, to market the parks and recreation in, in addition to all the other duties that she's doing, um, with the help of this new, uh, employee that we have who does graphic arts. So we haven't reduced the Parks budget, we haven't stolen from them or their ability to, again, to address, uh, capital needs or operational needs.
And so also, um, we, not only the 70,000 that we're spending on special events, but we also have a contract with Slate, um, that is over and above the, the employees that we're employing in that direction. So those types of things would be included in that cost.
Yeah, the Slate cost is, and again, um, because we don't have a full-time employ, the Parks and, Parks full-time employee that we took, we, we'd only have a halftime. So that really, that Slate portion is being covered out of, out of the, the salary savings of that position, so. Mr. Robinson?
I would just say that position as well as the position formerly held by LeAnn Hoffines. Um, it, the salaries, there's salary savings with both of those positions, which is that's how we're paying for the administration of Slate.
Thank you, Councilmember Berentine? Oh, Councilmember Olson, would you still?
Hold on, put it on.
Okay, thank you.
So you said you're centralizing the function of, like the example that you gave for the communication. Are we centralizing the cost or are we leaving those things in Parks and Rec, or are we moving those costs over? Cause there's only a savings for an employee one time.
Right.
So if you have an employee that, that apparently you no longer have at Parks and Rec? You just got done saying there was a savings from.
I'm sorry, what was your question, Mayor?
So you said there was a savings from, uh, personnel in Parks and Rec, and the position for LeAnn Hoffines has gone for the communication?
That's correct.
Okay, so if we're centralizing that into Allison's position, are the costs then being centralized too? So are you moving those costs that what, what was allocated to, to, um, Parks and Rec is now in this communication department so that we're, we're centralizing the duties and we're centralizing the costs? So we're not leaving anything in Parks and Rec?
Absolutely not. And I, actually, this is about CMO and I apologize if I didn't cover this when I, uh, did the communications department. But all of those costs have been centralized in the communications department, and that's what I presented to you all a couple of weeks ago.
So the total cost for the communication is being reflected in that department?
Absolutely.
Okay, that's, I.
Yep.
Whether you went over it or not, it got confused again in this conversation.
Absolutely, no, I agree with you.
Thank you.
And maybe the confusing part was that, you know, I think the, uh, corresponding departments such as Parks and Rec, you know, by removing that FTE, had their budget reduced as well, correct?
That's correct.
And I think that was the miscommunicated part.
But wasn't that, wasn't that taken into account when we did this budget for 2017?
Absolutely.
So it, it isn't a reduction in the budget, it's part of the budget.
Exactly, and I think that.
Well, then I guess that's where the confusion comes, is if you keep saying you're having a savings from LeAnn Hoffines and a position in, in there, then that would make it as if we've changed something in this budget, and we, we didn't, we changed it when we made this budget.
So let me in, let me help you all understand what I was saying, is the savings comes directly to pay for Slate. So we're not paying, uh, there's savings from, uh, not paying an FTE, uh, what we would have originally paid someone who already left, whether that be Megan Tanis, LeAnn Hoffines, or whoever that may be. Um, that, those monies are going to pay for Slate Communications in the administration piece. And so, let me do this, I promised you all a council communication for the communications department, um, let me give that to you so, so it better breaks down everything, um, and then we can have a further conversation about it. Um, but I, yeah, it, it is mainly, that is, there, you are correct, Councilmember Berentine, is that the budget is the budget, there is no, there is no taking away or reducing or anything like that, it's reallocating.
Well, unless you said there is budget period, but it wasn't, so.
No.
Thanks for clarifying that.
Thank you, Councilmember Russell?
I did have another question on the current budget status. On that picture, were the 2016 actual? Did we cut back dramatically from 2016?
Yes, actually we have. So in 2016, we actually had, um, all the positions that we currently have, city manager, assistant city manager, um, the strategy innovation exec secretary, he was working full-time, and we had a department assistant as well, in addition to the communications, um, coordinator position that we had. So really, we, we no longer have, uh, we've, we've reduced the hours, full-time hours of our executive assistant, and we no longer have the, uh, position relating to department assistant. We had two people who were working in our, in our area.
So that's when we moved all those employees around?
Some employees have been moved around, yes, yes.
Okay, and we, we changed the structure.
Yeah.
That was, what, a couple months ago that we did that?
Yeah.
Maybe even longer than that.
I'm, I'm losing time, so yes, that's, that's correct.
I think the bulk of it is.
Thank you.
Is enumerated in the, in the 2017 budget. Perhaps we can get some clarity, though, there may have been some minor movement during the year, and perhaps we get some clarity on that. Councilmember Berentine?
So since that got brought up, um, just for the city attorney, if we could just, um, I just want to make sure that when we did, I saw something in the charter about when we either put departments together or take them apart, that that has to be a function, uh, processed on with council. If you just, um, if I could just put a council request in for how that process looks and, and, and how we follow that, that would be good. Because it does, um, she's right, it does make it difficult to follow that along because we're not really looking at apples to apples with this.
Thank you. Uh, move us on perhaps to fire, did you have something on that, Mr. Pick?
I do have something on that, but I just want to get clarity on that council request because I, not understanding, so you're asking specifically, Councilmember Berentine, for the process by which departments are.
Restructured.
Restructured? I, I just want clarity so that we can answer that effectively.
It's in the charter, I ran across it in the charter, and so I was a little confused by that, and exactly what the process is, um, since it's in the charter, so I'm sure it's pretty straightforward. I just didn't realize, because I don't think we've really done that in the past where we did departments and undid departments and back and forth like that. So when I kind of ran across it by accident, I really was unaware that that was specifically in the charter like that.
And this is a point of clarification.
Clarification?
Yeah, we are familiar with that, and those have been brought forward to the city council for your approval. When we have, when we have changed departments, we've actually come for your approval.
I'm not saying it didn't.
Yeah.
I'm just asking for, since I wasn't familiar with it before.
Sure, okay.
Wasn't accusing anybody.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not saying you were.
I just, it's happened, then I just wanted the information.
Okay, no, thanks.
I think that's clear. Um, let's move on to fire?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, maybe, I gotta advance here just a second. So, um, fire budget, the fire budget is actually driven largely by our intergovernmental agreement with the city and county of Denver. And so what I've shown here basically is a, a short list of where we've come from and at least through the year 2024. As you're aware, we have a 20-year IGA or agreement with Denver that would run through 2035. And the agreement, the nice thing about it is that we've built in or negotiated an annual increase to that, to that fire budget. So if you look for January of 18, you'll see that we're moving from this current year's budget for fire at $5,568,180 to a budget of 3% more at $5,735,225. Um, and again, I, I love to remind folks that, uh, if, where we were in 2015, the fire budget was $9.1 million, uh, that we had with Inglewood Fire. And so our budget largely is driven by this. This is not the entire fire budget. Uh, we also have some additional costs within the fire area that cover outstanding workers' compensation claims that we still have open through the Inglewood Fire Department. I believe there are two of those, um, that Joan Weber, who you've met la, uh, you didn't meet her, but you've met her before, in our risk department, she is still trying to manage those claims, and so we still carry a budget to manage that, as well as we cover the cost for, um, electric for the two fire stations, both Station 37 and 38, uh, as well as some of the other utilities that aren't covered within that, within the lease.
Suggest a switch of.
Sure.
Month, year, rather than year, month, or you switch, because.
Oh, yeah.
It looks like a date.
Okay, gotcha.
Like the date of December 15th, December 16th, but then I realized.
Yeah, those are years.
I know, but the thing at the top says year, month, just do month, year, or do it the opposite.
Understood, yeah. And they had to simplify.
Or 2015, 2016.
I simplified this, this was an exhibit from within our, our IGA. So let's talk about some statistics for fire calls, um, with Denver on, on board. So our January through December of 2016, they responded to a total of 4,180 calls. Um, the average response time, and again, that's from dispatch receiving the call to them being on the scene, is four minutes and 54 seconds. And that is well within the NFPA 1710, I don't want to get too deep into the fire terminology for the calls, but Denver's goal, and I look at this on a daily basis, they give me run reports, is to actually be their travel time, not your dispatch time, travel time less than four minutes. And they hit that 95% plus, uh, each day when they're going to calls. Um, just so you see the spread, and this isn't, this isn't, um, you know, unusual, this is kind of tracking with some of where our calls were before. Jefferson Station has always been our busiest fire station, um, as our central fire station. And they, Denver Fire answered 2,601 of those 4,180 calls, um, last year from Jefferson and 1,245 from a coma. And then this is interesting too, um, we actually track how many times our Denver-based apparatus leave Inglewood to go deal with other calls. There were 421 calls that Jefferson Station went to outside of Inglewood and 195 for the a coma station. But the real telling number for us is that we had 1,723 disparate pieces of apparatus that came from Denver Fire outside of Inglewood to respond to calls within Inglewood or Inglewood incidences. That's, um, that's really, that's really good. Herefore, or before, we had automatic aid where we would hope that Littleton, and they typically responded from Littleton or South Metro, came into Inglewood to support Inglewood Fire. Fire statistics, uh, this is another little table, kind of gives you a breakdown. We had 86 fires, and I know you're going to say, wow, there's no way we had 86 structured fires, and you're correct. This particular category, they didn't break it down for me, um, for 2016, but I do have 17 broken out. Um, we had 86 fires, and that incorporates, um, trash fire weeds, structured fires, and automobile fires. So, you can see that the preponderance of the calls that they were going to were medical and rescue-related. So, that's not dissimilar, again, to the fire service today. You have a fire department as insurance in the event that there is a structured fire, but most of the calls they're running to are alarms and/or medical and related. And they're assisting the Denver Health paramedics with those medical calls, with those runs. So, this is, again, a breakdown. And you see that we have incomplete calls. And what that is, if somebody dials 911, they get transferred over from our primary public safety access point, Denver Fire, and they don't hold on, they just hang up. We send somebody to go check on it. And so, we had seven incomplete calls. That's what an incomplete call is, just so you're aware. We had a lot of hazmats in Inglewood, 138 in 2016. And that's anything from a fuel spill to somebody spilling a chemical. Or for our police department, one example, I know for sure that happened in 2016. We had an illegal grow. They had a sulfur burn burner that actually kills off bugs. The sulfur burner was continuously putting off sulfur, and we had to respond. That's how we figured out it was an illegal grow. That was a hazardous event. We had to send in the hazmat team. So, fire statistics, and again, just through April of 2017, we've had 1,349 calls. That's up from the same time in 2016. Again, the average response time, 4 minutes and 58 seconds to date, is excellent. Again, a breakdown, more again with Jefferson, few less with La Coma. And we've sent our... We've received, I mean, 544 pieces of separate apparatus into Inglewood from other outside Denver stations to assist us this year. So, that's an interesting statistic. Again, here's the breakdown. Of the 36 fires we've had through the month of April, we've actually have had 17 structured fires. We've been dealing with a lot of structured fires, for whatever reason, this year. And, yeah, it's disconcerting, actually. A couple of them are outstanding criminal things that are still being investigated for arson. But the nice thing, again, with our association with Denver Fire, we have nine pieces of apparatus in less than five minutes whenever we have a fire. And, again, to muster that level of service at four persons per apparatus is pretty impressive.
I have some questions on that.
Yeah.
Two questions, actually. What is a good intent call?
So, a good intent call here is... Yeah, down there, we have 126 of those. So, that's where we are... Denver Fire is going out and providing a service to the community. So, for example, if somebody asks them to a block party, if somebody asks them to come and do some public education, because that's one of the functions of our agreement, they do pub ed, that's what they're doing there. So, they're really trying to get out into the community, or they see a situation as they're driving. If they're coming back from a call and they see, "Hey, something doesn't look right over here," they have the good intent to go and figure out what's going on. So, that encompasses a large category of calls.
Then, one more question. When there are fires, structured fires or otherwise, are they also then in turn filing a police report with our police department, or how does that work?
Well, interestingly enough, I just spent some time this past Saturday with the Truck 38 Company, or the coma company. And our police, they say, are always on the call, either right before or at the same time Denver Fire is arriving. So, our police are aware. What happens is, again, we're the PSAP, or the primary public safety answering point for all 911 calls within Inglewood. So, our dispatchers listen to the call, and if it's medical-related, they obviously, and fire-related, they transfer it over to Denver. But sometimes, they listen in on the call and dispatch our police to go to that location as well to assist. I'm sure Commander Martin could correct me if I'm wrong. But, yeah, they're going to most of these calls, anyway. And I will tell you, from listening to the Denver Fire folks this weekend that I was... I did a high-intensity interval training class with in between Gas for Air. They were telling me how great our police department is and that they are on the calls, they're sometimes there first, they're doing CPR on people that need CPR. So, we have an awesome department, and we should be proud of that. Actually, I don't have anything else, just other than to answer questions that you might have on the fire budget. It's rather simplistic.
Thank you. Questions, comments regarding fire for Councilmember Russell?
So, this just reminds me of a question that I have. Who takes the dispatch calls to the fire department? Does the city of Inglewood take those dispatch calls and then decide whether to send it on to Denver Fire or not?
Yes, and so, when you dial 911, they're going to say, "What's the nature of your call?" And somebody says that it's a fire, obviously. They say, "Please hold, and we're going to..." And they hit a transfer protocol switch at the dispatch center that goes to the 911 center on Josephine Street in Denver. Then, they will also do a triage of the call to determine whether it's fire-related. They have two different cells in that 911 center. Actually, there's, yeah, two in the fire center, one for fire and one for medical. And they send it to the appropriate parties there, where they do what's called EMD, emergency medical dispatch, to determine whether or not they need to send just the engine or they need to send the paramedics as well.
So, then, does Denver only charge us for calls that they're sent on?
No. So, our contract is a fixed-price contract for services for the city of Inglewood to operate two fire stations 24 hours a day, every day of the year, with fire suppression as well as EMS and paramedics.
Okay.
So, regardless of the number of calls, if we got 10,000 calls, they would still provide it at that same cost. They might come back to us and say, "We're a little busier than we thought," but it's a fixed-price contract.
Okay, so, and I know this has already been taken care of, but, so, I mean, that one call where nobody was dispatched...
Yeah.
On... That happened at our point when the call came in. It never went any farther than that.
Correct. And that particular call has been analyzed, and that employee's been disciplined for that. And a process has been put into place to ensure that, again, err on the side of caution. When somebody calls in and says, "Hey, I'm not feeling very well, carbon monoxide detector's going off," you send that immediately to Denver, and you monitor that call.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Martinez?
I just had another question as it relates to the incomplete calls. You said that's when somebody kind of hangs up or whatnot. And it looks like it has really dramatically increased this year. Is that because of the transfer service, you think, or another reason?
It's hard to say. I don't know that I can answer that, Councilmember. It is disconcerting. Sometimes, little kids dial 911 as an accident, and so, we don't know. I have asked for them to give us a breakdown of those calls, and in some instances, the person has become unconscious, and they just go because they want to err on the side of caution.
Sure.
Other instances, it is. It's a... Somebody dialed 911 as an accident. I mean, that happens in this building because you have to dial nine to get out, and you dial 911. And then, if you hit one again, it's going to 911. And they're like, "Ha, kill it." So, yeah, there's any of a number of reasons, but I can't provide you...
I was just curious if there's anything obvious or...
Yeah, it's a good question.
Councilmember Berentine?
Now, everybody has a cellphone, too, so I didn't know if you're able to tell the difference between whether it's coming from a location or not. But it would be interesting to see why there's such an increase. And it could just be because everybody, including three-year-olds, have a phone now.
Yeah, isn't that true?
And then, just my only other request would be, since this is rather still new with the contract with Denver, if we could get a comparison to the same statistics prior to...
Sure.
Denver as well.
Yeah.
Including the response times, just all this information. So, we have some comparison, I think, would help. And the dispatch, then, is still being there, still our employees. It's still going through Inglewood and then the process that she said before. But the initial call is still going through...
Yes.
For both fire and police.
That is correct.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
You know, I just had a couple anecdotal comments, and that is, you know, that, you know, early on in our transition, I was getting a few calls about, you know, service issues. But really, more recently, I've only heard real positive sort of rave reviews of Denver recently. Obviously, you know, there's this call issue that we were describing, but I feel like we're on top of that. You know, and being able to see the response times and the data, you know, is reassuring that some of that is going relatively well. Apologize, I've lost my train of thought. I knew I had a question for you regarding this. Can't think of it, I apologize. Anybody else with anything on fire? Sorry about that.
Well, while you were thinking about that, I did remember the other program attributes, if that helps. I'll send this out to the council as well. So, you have the mandate. Is the city mandated to provide the program? What's the reliance on the city to provide that program? Because, again, there's somebody else who can do it. Then, the cost recovery. Does the city recover its costs on the program is number three. Number four is, what's the portion of the community served by that program? So, in some instances, it may be very narrow, a very narrow program, or is it to everybody? And then, lastly, the change in demand for the program. So, one of the things that we look at every year is, are we seeing an increased demand or a decreased demand in that program? And that also helps us to see if we need to adjust it from one quartile to another. But I'll send that out. Thank you.
Thank you.
You remember your question?
Thank you. Now, let's move on. I'm going to go ahead and suggest we're going to take a five-minute bio break.
Okay. Yeah, Resource X, yeah, that's the digital site.
Looks like 23andMe.
Oh, yeah, doesn't it?
Which I did, to find out that I was what I am.
Oh, okay, that's good.
That is what I am.
Yeah. Hey, thank you for bailing me out. You're talking communication, man.
Hey.
Hey, how you doing?
Doing fine, yeah.
I think he can get it real quick.
Oh, yeah? I know.
Murphy. Sir.
Yes, no problem.
How you doing, man? How's your house?
It's good. It's in progress. It's in progress. I met a few of them, so we are in transition still.
Oh, are you?
Because the kitchen needs to be totally good. Like Bellevue and Federal, is she? Bellevue or Beaumar Heights?
Is that kind of Lowell? Is that Lowell, though?
Huh?
Is it Bellevue and Lowell?
It's, uh... Is it Lowell? No.
You got Federal?
So, it's Federal, Lowell. Yeah, Lowell would be a closer one. When they ask me to give, like, large intersections, I never know which one to give because you can also give Sheridan and Quincy. Sheridan and Quincy is... I'm not that far.
You know, that's the old Denver Blue area.
Oh, really?
There's a section over there off of Sheridan and Quincy. There's all the Denver cops. Used to live when the Denver required you to live in the city of Denver.
That's cool. I didn't know that. That's awesome.
Dad had a cop work from back in the 50s. He didn't show up one day because of going down the road and his safe fell out.
What? Oh, my God.
It was during the period when...
Oh, my God. That's crazy. Yeah, man, it was tough.
So, where you staying? Are you staying at the old house?
No, we're with... No, that's not ours anymore.
Yeah, that's what I...
Yeah, it's not ours anymore. We're with her... My wife's parents. Just for a week or two. So, this is the last week. I can't do it. I mean, they're great.
We gotta get it, yeah, but we gotta get it.
Yeah. Well, no, I think we'll be able to move in our house next week. I mean, this incoming weekend. We just couldn't, with all the dust and stuff, you know?
So, you're going full all-out?
Full all-out, man. Right, the whole thing? New cabinets, new countertops, soft pool. Soft pool cabinets, granite countertop.
I priced them out, it's going to be like 20 grand for my house. I'm like, oh, man, for a full kitchen.
No, I have... Oh, yeah. Pool kitchen's expensive. I choke every time.
It's amazing what they get for kitchens. I look at them, it's like...
Well, there's so much to do. Yeah, my house was built in the 60s. So, a lot of it just needed to be updated hardcore. So...
Still amazed.
Yeah. You know, I actually... So, I just recently took down popcorn ceilings.
Uh-oh.
That was interesting. No, I hope not. But, yeah, I think, no, because it was added not to... It wasn't added in the 60s. It was added probably in the 80s or 90s.
Have it on my ceiling, I just don't mess with it.
Yeah. I had to, dude. It was just too much. It had gold sparklies in it.
Oh, yeah. I was going to take mine down until I heard how much it was going to cost.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm like, nothing.
I took it down myself. They told me, they quoted me $700.
The problem is mine is painted.
Oh, yeah, that's a... You have to have it painted.
Yeah. Once it's painted, you can't soak it with water and let it come down.
Yeah, that's what I do. I do. I scrape. I mean, it took me forever, but it saved us $700. So, that was nice. Talking about scraping popcorn ceilings.
Oh.
And then, I just took down...
Scraping popcorn off the ceiling?
Yep.
And then, oh, that stuff.
And then, I just took down wallpaper. That was interesting, too.
Oh, I'm a wallpaper...
You know what I did in my kitchen? Instead of taking down wallpaper, I took down it all.
Yeah.
I went to the whole wall. Drywall?
Yeah, just start over. I think that's a chip to do in some old home.
The wallpaper wasn't as bad as I thought it would be. You score it, and then you just peel it.
I just did a jog in Cherry Hills. Yeah, they squirt it, it's thin. Then, they have this... They just texture it.
Wow.
They have to try and take it down.
Yeah, that's crazy.
And I asked them if it'd peel off. No.
Well, the thing is... So, that's the problem is that you could tell. Like, they did that on one of my walls. They painted over it. You can tell. And it just kind of sucks because now I'm going to have to figure out something. So, anyway.
Well, it's textured. You just...
And that just... Yeah. I might have to figure out something.
You used to see fireworks in my house and that.
Oh, no. Excuse me. Yeah. We'll see. I sat way up on the hill, too.
Cut out the hood.
Got it?
So, you got a view out of this?
Yeah. I wish I learned to take pictures. Yeah, I did. I took lots, actually.
The carriers, the carriers, ground sorts. We had to move back to my...
So, stupidly, he sent me one of those. You know I'm excited about it. But I am the L. M. R. member.
Oh, learning.
Something up in CML?
Yeah, actually, yeah.
Let's get this show back on the road, please.
I was getting...
I didn't what you did last night.
Chatting it up.
All right, we're about to start again. Come on in.
Are we calling to order?
Yeah, I got 30 seconds.
No, I read that.[1558.74] No, I read that. I snuck out the back way.
That's a restroom, isn't it?
Yeah, I went to the kitchen.
Yeah. Okay, if I give folks to take their seats, we're gonna get started here. Hey, we're coming back, yes, to our last agenda item of the evening. This is our monthly financial review. This is informational. This is coming, our Finance and Administrative Services Director Kathleen Rinkle will review the city's financial status through May of 2017. Director Rinkle.
Thank you. Well, I'm happy to report that our, our position is still strong financially. We have had revenues still exceeding expenditures by almost a million dollars. We have revenues through May that are better than the budget expectations and better than the 2016 year-to-date revenues by almost eight hundred thousand. And we're still slightly lower than budget. Our budget is, at this point of the year, it's forty, about forty-two percent spent, or not spend, but we're forty-two percent through the year. We've only spent forty point eight percent. So we're doing better there as well. The first page of the report shows you where we are year-to-date in terms of revenue and expenditures and current ending fund balance. And this is by fund, so you can look at that information. The chart on page two reflects what I just had to share. We're about a million dollars better than expenditures, revenue better than expenditures at this point. I'd like to point out on page three, I'm going through this fairly quickly because it's, I would say, information that is pretty similar to where we've been in the last few months. So, I don't know that there's anything exciting. Always a good thing in financials. But general revenues are laid out here by line item as to the way we collect them. Looking at the bottom line, you can see that our revenue for this year is at forty-two point eight percent received. And we are forty, forty-one point seven percent of the year. Same with the general fund. We're below the forty point seven, forty-one point seven percent at forty point eight percent received. Fund balance is strong. You've seen this chart before. It really hasn't changed on page four. And it won't change until we have our new estimate of where we believe we'll be in 2017, and we'll be collecting that as we collect the 2018 budget. That happens over July and August, so we'll have that in front of you shortly. The next chart is pretty much a recap of the two charts that you saw on page three. But it has the additional fund balance, uh, numbers at the bottom. We are strong in fund balance as well at this point. Page six shows you the change, sales and use tax analysis. Page seven, one of our favorite pages. We have area seven, which again is carrying us quite a bit.
You have to raise that up a bit.
I know. And, and that, it worries me a little bit. I mean, I'm excited at this point, but it worries me a little bit because it is a volatile area for us. And it sways pretty easily. At this point, we have, and I'm looking at page eight at this point, we've collected four point three million last year. At this time, we'd only collected three point four, or three point five million. So we're at twenty-three point five percent over what we've collected this time last year. That's really, I think, what's helping hold us up. And then on page nine, you can see the comments that go with the changes that we're seeing, the year-to-date variances. Again, nothing exciting, but I'm open to questions if you have them.
Questions or comments from council? Councilmember Berantine, did you have something?
I've forgotten. What is the policy on how much we hold from the outside sales for protests on that, or for filings on that?
That was, I did see that on here.
And since that has gone up, have we, should we increase that?
It, it is increased. I know I saw that on here. Where was I looking at? Oh, here it is. On page eight, the unearned sales tax, third line from the bottom. And you can see we increased that each year.
On what page?
Page eight.
Uh-huh.
And for 2017, we've got one point four five.
Do you think that should be more, considering the dramatic increase?
We haven't had that many requests, even over the last several years.
Uh-huh.
Uh, should it be more? Um, it's hard to say.
Isn't there some legislation on this as well, about reducing the three-year term for that?
Yeah, it's a three-year term currently, we hold.
Statute of limitations.
That people can come back and get that money back? Do you know, you know what I'm talking about?
Are you talking to me?
Yeah, well, yeah, I was just wondering, I mean.
Why are you asking me?
I'm just, well, because you were, you were looking quizzically at me, so I was just, I mean, since Councilmember Olson, or whoever was, pointed out that it was such a dramatic increase. Um, I mean, I know there's some legislation that's taken away that three-year opportunity, but since people do have a three-year opportunity to come get that back. If, if we can't identify, if we're not identifying where this big upswing in the money is, then we may be missing who can come back to us.
We are holding more money because we ever, we're gaining more sales tax. It's a percentage, right.
You're doing that on a percentage. You're doing that percentage. Yeah, I, I just think it would be important for us to at least try to identify where that's coming from, so that we can at least be proactive in, in, trying to guess on whether they might come back in the three-year time period and try and get it back from us, so.
Might be helpful to look at, you know, claims that have been made over the last few years.
Absolutely.
To get us an idea of how much of that.
And then, of course, the legislation, if it goes through, then, well, but that'll also be somewhat contingent on the sales tax collection, or how they're doing that piece of it, too, so.
One of the reasons this is in the forefront of your, of your mind, and probably in all the councilmembers' minds, is this was the basis of litigation for another city here in Colorado. It did just recently settle out in favor of the cities, but it's bringing it to the attention of the legislature, and it is something we're gonna have to keep a close eye on.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments or questions from council? Seeing none, thank you for the report. I will move us on to Councilmember's Choice. Who do you think would like to kick us off this evening? Councilwoman Martinez?
I just wanna say I had a great time at CML. I'm looking forward to sharing with the council what I learned and some ideas that I took away. Also, KEB had their Keep It Clean Day at Bellevue Park on Saturday, and we had about thirty volunteers come and help, which was a really great turnout. And we collected about forty bags of trash from Bellevue Park, so that was.
Six shopping carts.
And two shopping carts, and a lot of miscellaneous things. But I thought it was a really great turnout, and a great job to KEB rallying all those volunteers and collecting so much trash. And I had another question on KEB. Is there, how, how would we go about adding a youth member to a board or commission? Do we know? Okay. Okay, because I think it would be kinda neat to add a youth member to that, to that group.
Yeah, we do have a youth member that we turned down, remember, for an appointment.
Yeah, but KEB doesn't have a youth member spot, so I wasn't sure.
Correct. And so, you know, whether or not we could create one or whatnot, yeah, great.
Yeah. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Berantine, would you mind going next?
That's a good idea. I talked to some of the people, the two youth members that did the presentation at CML. And that might not be a, that would be a good board for them to do. Just real quick, the council member, the council request that I did on the Medici Broadway Comaloff, I appreciate the information that was provided, but it was not what I was asking. What I was saying was that the, um, contract that EHA did with Medici, what they said at that meeting was that the contract says they will, Medici will only take from EHA Section Eight housing off their list. Not, not what they're, I mean, I under, this was useful information, but I was surprised that the only thing that they contracted with them for, in that partnership that they did, was to take Section Eight housing off their list. And the reason that that came up was because EHA is raising the rent at Simon Center. So then if people can't afford that, if they're not reaching that thirty, the thirty percent, you know, adjusted income deal, then they're, they're gonna ship them over to theirs. So that's where I'm thinking that there might be some inappropriate influx of, of that. So, I wanted to see what the contract was that they had made from Inglewood Housing to, to Medici. And then the rest of this was very interesting information. I appreciated that, but not quite exactly what I asked. It was kinda the other way around, not them. And then, unfortunately, when we got done with council last Monday, I have had a problem in my area where there's somebody that is burning some material that seems to be plastic or something, but it creates a huge amount of smoke. Really dense, very quickly, then it dissipates. It's always late at night, and for the last several months, I've had this complaint. The, I've, I've tried to encourage people to call the police, but they are concerned about the activity going on at this house and do not wish to be the person complaining. So I said, I will. So, Monday night, when I came home from council meeting, and it was late, so it generally happens after eleven o'clock that this is going on. No, it generally happens after eleven o'clock that I get home from a council meeting, too. But it, it just happened Monday, so I called the police. I stayed at that location at the corner of Princeton and Pearl, but it's coming from a location on Pennsylvania, the southeast corner, home at Pennsylvania and Princeton. But it affects that area because apparently the window is always blown east or something. And I waited for about forty minutes at that corner until a police officer drove by, but they didn't see me. And then, of course, forty minutes later, they're not gonna smell anything. I mean, if they'd have gotten out of the car, they would have. So then, I was asleep, and they called me, and I realized it was eleven thirty at night when I finally woke up and called. And again, there was maybe some miscommunication. I might have been half asleep, I don't know. But again, I waited, and about twenty minutes later, I saw an officer drive by, but maybe they're not understanding what the problem is here. So, and I tried to drive by the house. It doesn't have a number on the, at the end of it, but it's the southeast corner of Pennsylvania and Princeton. And it happens probably about two or three times a week. And I understand that the, it's not that they're afraid of the police or concerned about the police, but they are concerned about outing themselves with us. So, because I can go outside and see it happening, I have no problem of going ahead and being the person that makes the complaint. So, the reason I'm bringing it up as a council request is not because the police didn't respond or anything. I just think maybe I'm not making it clear enough what's going on when I call nine one one and up our nine one one calls. I shouldn't have done that. You get up at eleven thirty at night and go, fine, I'm calling, and it's all choky out there. So, it's not anything to do with the police, or they're not trusting the police. It's just the situation, and they need to find out what's going on over there, because obviously, there's people. It, it just, speculation starts to run rampant about what's going on, and I don't want to cause these people any problem if it's nothing serious. But I also, we need to curtail this activity because it's causing some problems. And that's all I had.
Why wouldn't that go into fire?
Huh? Because they asked me, when I called nine one one, do you see any flames? And I go, no. So I went walking down this alley, and there's people out there, and there's, there's people in this, in garage. And then with some of the speculation that people have done, I went, wait a second. I, I don't think I should go ask anybody. It's not my job. And all of a sudden, I'm in the alley, and then I'm like sneaking off going, this is, I do not want to. I don't have a gun. I'm not, I don't have a hose. I don't have anything. So, just because the, the most of it, I couldn't see any flame, they asked.
That they wouldn't have sent a fire truck right away.
I don't, I don't know. And I don't know why it didn't happen before, because there have, over the last several months, been several times that I came home late, and there were people out trying to figure out whether somebody's house was on fire. And we walked around and knocked on some doors, and it turned out it was coming from this garage, so. And then people didn't wanna go to this house, so. And it didn't burn down, so. Now we don't sound like good neighbors, so I'm not, I'm not liking that, so. But we, we were trying, and I didn't think it was something that I should handle myself. I don't think that's appropriate.
Thank you. Councilmember Russell?
I have nothing tonight.
Mayor Perot?
I, like Ms. Martinez, I had a great time at CML. Probably the best opening session ever. Oh my goodness. If you, if you missed the opening session, you missed one of the most dynamic. I was not bored. And it was a great message. In fact, I, I downloaded his material, and, and I've been reading that. It's just, it's just been amazing. And one of the other classes that I liked, that I had a hard time staying awake in because it was after lunch, but it was just, was the impact fees class. And I know some other councilmembers were there, and, and some staff was there. That was an amazing class, and I hope that we're looking at doing something with that. I kinda feel we missed the boat on some stuff, and we need to get that in place as soon as possible, so. And there were other, again, amazing classes that we went to. I know, it seems like we were all in different classes doing something, but. And then, then there was the, the strange where, I've been in this class before, you know, so if you've gone to a few CMAs, maybe you signed up for a class, and go, that sounded, yeah, it sounded interesting last year, too, when I went. So, I'm, I'm sitting there going, I've been here before, so. But no, it was a great time, and I had a wonderful hotel room. It's a joke, but, sorry. But no, I had a, I had a super time, so. City manager, in the years past, I've donated my driveway on the Fourth of July formally. If you need that in writing, let me know for the police and fire. Police have used it numerous times, because to get in and out, they can park there, and they, they've been great parkers of, of there. So, I'm more than willing to make that formal donation again this time, so if you would just let them know. I know they've appreciated in the past. Generally, they park there with their bikes, and they go all through the park on their bikes during the Fourth of July, so. And glad to be back. Thank you.
Councilwoman Wilson?
That joke was about Allison Swamp Cooler in her room, which was really an air conditioner, but it sounds like it was a bit noisy. A couple of things. I, I too thought that, yeah, CML was one of the best. I don't know why. Everything seemed, everything I went to was, went really well. So, I sent you my stuff because I'm leaving town tomorrow morning, and will be back next Thursday, so I will be out of the country. I am gonna try and put an out of office on my email. I always forget to do that, because I'm gonna be a little bit less accessible doing day trips and stuff, but I'll be in Prague. If you need me, though, put a red exclamation point. I can't imagine that there would be any more. I had a couple of calls about the accessory dwelling units meeting last week, and wondering what is the timeline for that. They were very confused as to who actually held the meeting and what the process was, and I, and it didn't, I mean, it sounds like it was one of those open houses in here. And I, just for future ones, it might be good if, if the, if the staff would provide some overview of what the process is. So when they walk in the door, they know who's holding this meeting. Maybe they had something and she missed it, one of them. One was just asking me about accessories dwelling units, just in general, what I thought about it. The other person was truly confused about what, you know, what's the next step, and it sounded like there wasn't anything.
Actually, there is a next step, and that was put on in conjunction with the planning and zoning commission.
Well, I know there is a next step, but they, they, it would be helpful if there was a flyer or something when they come and say, what is this? She was expecting someone to speak. She didn't really know why she was coming to it. I mean, what, what's, what's her voice in it? So, just maybe some outline for people that are not used to that process. I had to convince her that this wasn't some independent group, that she thought it was being put on by a developer at some point. So then she was very suspicious about what was going on, rightfully so, if she thought, you know, that, but. So, maybe just a little bit more information to people come to something like that. But yeah, it'd be great if you could maybe give us an outline. So if we get calls, when, when do you think the next planning and zoning discussion will happen with it, and those kinds of things? And, leading up to that, if they are looking at particular articles and trends within other cities, I'd like to see them now rather than later. I don't wanna burden you with anything extra, though, so if it's a lot of extra stuff, because I think this is gonna be a big one to talk about. That and Airbnbs and neighborhoods will be bringing out a, I would think, a lot of people.
Yes.
And I'd rather read it now rather than three hundred and fifty pages like we had tonight, which I found fascinating. I actually read it all. You have your own. I think that's it.
Thank you. Councilwoman Yates?
CML was a good, had a lot of good classes this time. I went to both of the classes on, on impact fees. There seemed to be a little confusion between the two. I'll stick with the attorneys one versus the fire department's one. It was overall really, really good. And on a side note, notice I got a little cold here. I was worrying up there because I was getting winded pretty easy. I'm glad to see that it was a cold coming on and not the altitude getting to me. Well, normally, it doesn't bug me on that stuff, but, but it was a good show, so.
Thank you. Gone to mayor's choice. Yeah, there was something going around. I feel like I'm finally just shaking. It's some sort of respiratory bug going around for the last couple of weeks. But I, I promise you, I'm done with it, I think. Took a couple of weeks, though. You know, I just wanted to second some of those thoughts. CML was great. You know, they must be stepping up their game a little bit on the opening and closing sessions, because the closing session was excellent as well. I kinda thought, you know, some of those, you know, opening and closing sessions weren't as valuable in the past, and, and so I'm glad to hear that the opening session was so great as well. You know, to Councilmember Martinez's point, I, you know, at some point, I'd love to see us have a youth council, you know, if we thought we'd have enough participation. You know, I know that, you know, the participation or number of applicants we've gotten in youth applicants has substantially varied over the last couple of years. But perhaps this is something we can discuss with the school district a little more, to see if we can up some participation. And if it were up, I'd love to see a, a youth council that was more general focused, rather than, you know, kind of putting them into these kind of individual niches. As we saw some, you know, fantastic youth at that presentation, they were, you know, very competent and very articulate. Yeah, and so, you know, it kinda opened my eyes as to what a student body or youth council could really look like and what they could really accomplish. And as pointed out, we did have a youth commission member who was not, according to our consensus, chosen for one of the spots. And just FYI to the council, I think I'm gonna work with the city manager's office to offer an internship through the mayor's office for this individual. And so, just, just FYI, and if anybody wants to contribute or work on that with me, you're more than welcome. Appreciate the cleanup of the parks as well, Councilwoman Martinez. I, you know, last year, we had a group, who was a Pokemon group, who were playing Pokemon in town. And we organized them to do a park cleanup of Cushing Park, which was really fantastic. Unfortunately, I don't think anybody's playing Pokemon around town anymore. I'll have to, I'll have to touch base with them, but it seems to be an ending fad. But perhaps there's some other group of people who are doing stuff at our parks that maybe we could hit up for a little bit of volunteer work. You know, also, you know, the idea of movie night in the parks has also kinda been discussed, and maybe that's something this body should take up. Or perhaps our Parks and Rec Committee could come forward with a recommendation, if you wouldn't mind, maybe who are liaison, yeah, if you wouldn't mind bringing that, and maybe seeing if, if they think that's a good idea, and what recommendations they might bring for this body to consider it. You know, it might be a little late in the season for this year, but perhaps we could stop something together, or we could look at something, doing something next year. Finally, as I was coming in, Councilmember Olson and I were rushing up the stairs to make our five thirty. You know, the council did discuss and agree to, I think, five thirty starts for study sessions through June. This is our last study session in June. Looking through July, we're not quite out of the woods yet. Through, you know, at the end of July is when we start to decompress substantially. I guess I wanted to throw out for this body, if, if five thirty is difficult, we could move to six. We do have a fifth Monday, July thirty first. You know, I think if we took on that fifth Monday, we could easily move to six o'clock. I think we could move to six o'clock and try to make it work and stay a little bit later. Yep, okay, no fifth Monday. Okay, I'll take.
I'm gonna give up a half hour or hour for a whole night.
You know, I'm not sure. You know, this is my way of saying five thirty is not that bad, perhaps, you know, when you look at the alternatives, but I guess I just wanted to get feedback on that. Whether we wanted to continue with the five thirties through July, or if we wanted to go back to a six. or if we wanted to go back to a six and stay a little bit later, Councilmember Martinez?
I was gonna say, 5:30 is a little bit tough for me, we could also do in between, like 5:45.
That'd be reasonable, Councilwoman Russell?
I, I had thought that we'd, I was totally wrong, I'll be, but I thought we agreed it for the night that we had regular meetings, because we were trying to add a little bit more time, I didn't know we were doing it on the regular study nights. I can get here close to 5:30, and I got here just today on time again, but I, I think when I said yes, I said, "I'm probably gonna be late a lot," and that isn't really a great way to have people present. I would really prefer to go back to our schedule that we had at the beginning, I don't know why we made this, I mean, I do, thought we didn't even need study sessions, it's like, holy moly, I think, I think, and moving it up is not good for citizen participation, they have said to us they can't get here because they work, and there are a handful of us here too that have traditional kind of jobs that end at certain times, but not at five, so I would prefer that we move it back, I'd rather be here.
I've heard a suggestion of 5:45, I've heard a suggestion of moving us back to six, does anybody else wanna weigh in to help me with this?
I don't mind staying a little extra, but it's hard to get here.
Okay.
I mean, if, what, what Councilmember Olson said was that we had originally agreed the nights that we had council that we would maybe do something, but then it ended up being every single time too, and I was, I was surprised too. I wasn't gonna say anything, but now that you did, I have some, but.
So, so your preference would be to go back to six on regular study session nights and stick with 5:30 when we have a regular meeting?
If that's what we originally agreed to, that's fine, if we start doing 5:45, 5:50, 5:56, I'm not gonna remember what the heck we're doing.
I think what we agreed to.
Hard enough to get back into the 5:30 thing.
I think what we agreed to, and what I heard, and maybe, you know, hearing a couple of members, seeing they heard something different, is a little discouraging, but I thought we agreed to all study sessions beginning at 5:30 through June, and that's why I feel like that agreement is somewhat expired now, and I was trying to look for additional feedback.
I would wanna go back to six then, because I, it is very difficult, and I've had to make some huge changes, and it is difficult when we don't have a quorum to start the meeting, then it's by default, it doesn't start till six or 5:45 anyway.
You know, the only real concern I have with that is next week, manager Keck with code upgrades prior to the meeting. Yeah, if we go to an hour there, do you think we'll have to break that up to another session?
No, I think you can get it done in an hour.
Right, there you go, so I'm hearing, unless anybody wants to weigh in some more, Councilmember Russell, are you gonna support, suggest support for six as well?
I'm okay with six, I mean, if we, I don't wanna go back to the fifth Monday, it helps us to have a break, and, I mean, we did, when we changed the time of the council meeting back to seven o'clock, we did agree that if it's not working, we could change it back to 7:30, and if we're gonna change it consistently, I think we should do that.
Okay, I think I'm hearing we're gonna move back to six o'clock for all study sessions moving forward, and we'll see how that goes for a little while.
That's after June.
Next meeting, starting, starting, starting next meeting, 'cause we haven't noticed posted next meeting yet, so. We'll move till six, yeah, the end of June, you know, it's happened, so.
I thought next week was still June, okay, that's fine.
Okay, so I think we've got that settled, we'll stick with six o'clock moving forward, and no fifth Mondays, I agree, this council's been working very hard, we had CML last week, and we did multiple study sessions the week before, so I know we need a little bit of break, and that's why I did try to keep tonight's agenda a little bit light. City managers' choice?
I don't have anything this evening, mayor.
Thank you, city attorney's choice?
I do have something this evening, I'm meeting with the fire chief on Wednesday at one o'clock to review three draft ordinances associated with draft, with adopting the fire code, which are as broad as I can make them, and I need her input on those to make sure I've, I've drafted as broad a range of options as possible, after I visit with her about those, I'm gonna be sending those out to you just to review, I need you to understand, these are just some ideas to give you some parameters to think, to think about adopting the fire code, you are not bound to choose any of the three, you as a governing body get to decide what's best for the city, but the conversation's gotten so broad, I thought that if you had three draft possibilities, that it would give you some ideas about how to frame the conversation when, when you talk to her on next Monday night, so, just to let you know to expect those next Wednesday afternoon, just for your review.
Thank you, and with that, we are hereby adjourned, thank you, everyone.
OMG.
It's still all light out.
I know, right?